Thank you, Ms. Graffteza. And I am calling to order this West Orange Board of Education virtual meeting on this Monday, March 22nd, 2021. And so, good evening to our West Orange public school community and welcome to, or good evening, Dr. Kascón. Good evening, my fellow board members. And going to welcome our special guests who are joining us later on this evening. Welcome to our student liaisons. And Mrs. Flowers, welcome and good evening to you. And would you do the honors for roll call, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Roll call, Mrs. Werta.
Here.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Here.
Mr. Rothstein.
Here.
Vice President Tony Cliff.
Here.
President Trick Scales.
Here.
Thank you. Notice of meeting, please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 8th and February 25th, 2021. That said, notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said, notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Flowers. And now we will move into consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of March 8th, which is our attachment one. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Tony Cliff. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Werta. Any discussion? Ms. Flowers, would you do the honors, please?
Mrs. Werta?
Yes.
Mrs. Merkinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trick Scales?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will move into our student liaison reports with our illustrious student liaisons. So ladies, who's first up tonight?
I am.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Celeste.
First, we would like to highlight the Student Council Instagram for a Successful Black History Month online event where they featured local Black women and students for each day of the month. They were actually able to raise over $800 for the Black History Month Scholarship, and they'll be celebrating in a similar way for Women's History Month, where they'll be highlighting female teachers, coaches, supervisors, and administrators for the month of March. You can look at that at their Instagram, @wohs.stuco, @w-o-h-s-st-u-c-o.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Also, our clubs are trying to stay as active as possible while also remaining, you know, safe and safely distanced. So, in an effort to present a presentation this year for, I typically do a musical, The Glee Club, or the West Orange Drama Club will typically put on a musical. Of course, that's difficult to do this year. However, there will be an event, the Shows Must Go On event, which is an event compiling songs from West Orange High School's past 20 years, from the musicals done in these past 20 years. It will be taking place on April 23rd at 8:00 PM, April 24th at 2:00 PM, and 8:00 PM. This event will be taking place outdoors at Ospac, which is an outside venue in West Orange, of course, complying with all CDC guidelines. Tickets must be purchased in advance and will go on sale on April 12th. And you can find that ticket link in www.wobo.org/cetheshows. We will also put this link in our student liaison's Instagram, which we will mention a little bit later in the presentation. Also, I wanted to talk about Scriptus, which is the West Orange Chapter of the National English Honor Society, has an upcoming event. I don't know if I've ever mentioned this before, but I am also the president of Scriptus. And so, we are hosting the, like, West Orange Common Reader. And the Common Reader is actually an activity that the, you know, the NEHS chapters across schools, in schools across the country, do, where they all read one selected book and then engage in discussions within their respective chapters. We were looking to extend the conversation to students outside of Scriptus and give them the opportunity to engage. And so, we thought it would be great to do kind of a school-wide Common Reader event where students will be reading this year's selection, which is The Nickel Boys by Colson Whitehead. It is an absolutely brilliant novel that deals with themes of race, trauma, and hope. And we are also, what will happen is that students will read the book, and then on April 15th, we will all come together and have a discussion. We also encourage students to present any artistic pieces. Information, more information and links will also be included in our Instagram bio. And we, but we were really excited, you know, especially having, considering our current sociopolitical climate, we think that this selection could be just a great choice to have for kind of a book club discussion group. And Scriptus also has other events planned for April, which is Poetry Month. We are hoping to collaborate with elementary schools for the Poem in Your Pocket event and other events, so stay tuned for that. Thank you. Audrey?
Exciting. Isn't she so cool? All righty, lastly, Olivia did mention our website that we have. So we do have a link tree in our Instagram bio. If you don't have our Instagram, it's w-student-reps. We're still updating a few of the links, so a lot of the links that Olivia had mentioned will go in by the end of the night, but for right now, we have the link to our webpage on Wobo, the Wobo page, and then the link to our feedback. Please, students, give us feedback. We're not gonna, like, snitch on you or anything, as long as you don't say anything crazy. We just want to hear your feedback. We really want to talk to you. It's been a rough year, and we really want to know how you're feeling, so please give us as much feedback as possible, and we'll be waiting to hear from you. I think that is it.
Thank you so much. Both of you are cool. So just, just tell us how you're reaching out to everyone, all the students, to let them know about the Instagram page.
So I try a lot to promote on my personal Instagram. I also have a Finsta, so I try to promote on that as well, because I have a lot of other friends on that. So I try to promote as much as possible, or like, I'll post it on my story, I'll talk about it with my friends, have them talk about it as well. You know, kind of just spread the word, word of mouth, really.
And I think also, it is really useful to have something like a feedback form available. It's something like social media, which Instagram everybody uses, having that link available in our bio for students to kind of access in order to provide feedback is the entire purpose, our entire purpose as liaisons is to extend that opportunity to serve as a bridge between administration and students. And so, I think having this is a really, really great thing. And, you know, yeah, so this is accessible in our, in our bio and our Instagram bio.
All right, that's great. And I, and I hope that middle school students can reach out to you as well. So as usual, very informative, the whole idea of the school-wide read at the high school, I think, is phenomenal. So I hope that that takes off and that we have a number of students who participate. So thank you so much. And we will now move on to our superintendent's report for the evening. Dr. Kascón?
Thank you, President Trick Scales, and thank you, Ms. Ridley and Ms. Celeste, for being here tonight and for the reports. We always appreciate it. And thank you to our community members in attendance and members of the administrative team who are present tonight to present with Mr. Mendez on Middle School Honors, of course, members of the board. Just before we, I turn it over to Mr. Mendez to present on the Middle School Honors Program, just a couple of top-of-mind kind of updates I wanted to give to the community. I will be sending out a detailed letter tomorrow, but I thought I would just kind of hit on some of these points tonight as part of just a brief report. So I would just, again, inform the community, obviously, at last week's public meeting on Thursday, the board did approve the preliminary budget, which has been uploaded into the financial software and sent to the county for review. That presentation is available on the website, as is the video of the presentation, all of which will be linked in my letter tomorrow. Just to reiterate, as it relates to some of the fiscal points, we have had the benefit of receiving to date, well, I shouldn't say received yet, but we are eligible for over $3 million in the ESRT2 grant, otherwise known as the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund II, or ESRT2. And these funds came in particularly handy, as we spoke about last week at the budget presentation, we're going to be able to use a sizable amount of that grant to fund additional necessary HVAC remediations, to install mechanical ventilation in rooms presently without them that are currently offline, and that were taken offline at the beginning of the year, as well as some key technology purchases. Additionally, we have approximately $600,000 that we will be utilizing for learning loss, summer programming, as well as mental health support going into next year. You may have read about the American Rescue Plan. Now, the link that we reviewed earlier on, a couple of weeks ago, or maybe last week, indicated that West Orange is slated to qualify for $8,586,000, which is sort of like incredible, but at the same time, wanting to understand really a few parameters of that money, namely, is it money that needs to be expended in one year? Can we budget that over multiple years? What are the allowable expenses? Are all questions we've yet to receive answers to, and we've yet to really receive. Ms. Flowers, just fact-check me on that one. Have we in fact had that allocation confirmed?
No, we have not, Dr. Kascón.
Okay. So we don't know if that figure is accurate, and of course, we certainly don't know what the allowable expenses are, or the, you know, the number of years we'll be able to spend that money. But still, it's, it's a, it's not bad news, you know, even if it's but a fraction of that, it will be helpful in some way to managing our finances next year. As you know, tonight, we'll be getting a presentation on the Middle School Honors Program. I will link all those resources through my letter tomorrow. We've talked about in our district goal, doing an equity survey. I'm pleased to let the community know that I'll note this in my letter tomorrow, and that that survey will go live on Wednesday for all parents, guardians, caretakers, staff, and students. And so we look forward to gathering that information in order to kind of take our first steps towards an equity needs assessment to help inform our planning and goal-setting for next year. And finally, you know, last but certainly not least, is just providing some updates on expanding onsite time and in-person instruction. So the first thing I would like to say is that, over the course of the last several weeks, we had already begun to move forward with some plans in this regard. Two or three weeks of having onsite instruction and a bit more on the elementary level had clearly shown to us that, you know, that within our cohort model, that our occupancy, we were not at max occupancy, even with the six foot of social distance. And we recognized that this was certainly not an efficient use of our space when we knew that we had students who could greatly benefit from having additional time onsite. And so that's a phase we're in presently, and that's actually already begun to happen. K-12 is that students who are identified, in some cases in special education, Tier Three Intervention, just a qualifier on that, intervention is akin to basic skills and Tier Three is basically the highest level of intervention support. Students who might be, previous years considered for retention, including, we're not limited to those students, would be in a Tier Three Intervention, ESL, students that are demonstrating higher chronic absenteeism, students in crisis, all those students we have been identifying through principals and through INRS teams in the buildings and have been including them and bringing them in to those cohorts to fill in those cohorts, so that we're servicing as many students as possible within the six foot of social distance based upon needs, but also having more students in classrooms to ensure that when students are onsite, that they're benefiting from that social interaction and sense of community, which is a big part of why they're in school in the first place. This is also happening, again, on the middle school and the high school level. An example on the high school is, you know, for example, seniors who might be in danger of not graduating have been identified primarily as students who would qualify for additional onsite time. Of course, as we know, now the high school was shut down due to a two-week quarantine, but upon return, April 19th, that will continue. And also, based upon the current occupancy, even within the six-foot social distance guideline, we actually are in a position where, based upon occupancy, we could actually combine cohorts at the high school, and so the high school is working towards that. A lot of conversation has been had about Fridays and the idea that, could we make Fridays an onsite day, and even could we go to a synchronous, a full synchronous learning day on Fridays? And, you know, I brought this question forward to the building principals, you know, kind of from my ivory tower perspective, with the sense of like, yeah, we could do that. That's easy enough for us to do that. We'll go, you know, alternating three-day, two-day cohorts, and we'll just confer Friday to a day like we do Monday through Thursday. The principals had reservations about this, and the reason being is that I think it's important to realize that, you know, our model is structured around a couple of kind of big macro pieces. One is, is that we're servicing two distinct populations simultaneously. We're servicing a virtual population simultaneously with students who are onsite. And as such, our afternoons and our Fridays are built into our model, baked into our model to serve certain purposes. So for example, on Fridays, there are a host of different services that we do on Fridays, and those include occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, basic skills, Tier Three Intervention, small group instruction, labs, instrumental lessons, gifted instruction, enrichment, and intervention and referral services. So if we were to make Friday an instructional day, all of those things which we presently have reserved for Friday would now need to be built into the week. And what that would mean is, is that students would be getting pulled out of their instruction during the week, whether that was brick and mortar or virtual, and losing that instructional time during the week. And ultimately, that's a question that we bandied and batted around a bunch on our team, and ultimately, the recommendation that came from my building principals and the curriculum team was that that was not a change that would be constructive overall for our model. I think a similar premise applies to going to full days in the present model. Presently, our model and our schedule is based upon half-days, meaning that the afternoon is scheduled around related arts, it's scheduled around small group. And so, to go to a full day while trying to service these two cohorts would really require a complete retooling of the model and the schedule, which would be particularly disruptive at this time of the year. Now, moving into next year, rebuilding a model, these are things that we consider, but they are problematic this year. But let's talk about what's on top of folks' minds, which is the recent guidelines, revised guidelines from the CDC for schools which close the social distance from six feet to three feet. Now, I think it absolutely bears mentioning that neither the New Jersey Department of Education nor the New Jersey Department of Health have aligned the state guidelines for schools with those of the CDC. Further, and somewhat disappointingly, the Commissioner of Education in a more recent press conference seemed to allude to the fact that we could not expect any further guidance from the Department of Education within the next six weeks. Nevertheless, I, and I think this position is shared by many superintendents with whom I've spoke, that this guidance from the CDC does provide the necessary justification and rationale for superintendents to feel comfortable moving in this direction. That being said, I have advised the board that I do believe it is prudent because of the fact that this guideline runs counter to the guideline, which is presently in the road back document, for us to have any changes to our reopening plan, and particularly one as fundamental as this, should be forwarded to the county superintendent of schools, and ultimately, the New Jersey Department of Education for approval, just like our original plan was. And I've been somewhat surprised by the fact that superintendents have not placed the onus, quite frankly, on our governing authorities to weigh in on this. In fact, if superintendents were to do that, it might actually, if but tacitly, by virtue of the State Department of Education's approvable plan with a recommended three-foot of social distance, tacitly provide the NJDOE's seal of approval for that. And so I have advised the board that changes to our plan should be forwarded to the county superintendent, like they were in August, and to the Department of Education for approval. That being said, when you read the fine print, if you will, of the CDC's guidelines, it certainly makes this recommendation couched within this premise of community spread, transmission, and overall risk level of the community. It's not simply move forward regardless, but obviously, taking into consideration from a public health standpoint, what is the epidemiological situation within the region and within the municipality? And so, the fact that, you know, our state presently, and quite disappointingly and frustratingly, when weeks ago, we saw our state moving and trending almost all into the moderate range of risk, we see now that our state is moving back into that high range of risk. So what I can tell you is, is that at such time, and as really has been a consistent point on my part as a superintendent, that when our community moves into the moderate to low level of risk, then we should feel comfortable moving forward with a modification of six feet to three feet, and we will be utilizing barriers, though they are not necessarily required under CDC guidelines. And that will be what we will propose in our revised plan. It will also be corroborated with our local Department of Health and District physician. But a final point, I believe that there is a somewhat of a misconception that the closing of the distance to three feet guarantees us the ability to combine all of our cohorts. And the reality of that is, is that in some cases, that's true. In some cases, you know, by virtue of the quirks, the idiosyncrasies, if you will, of that particular cohort, you know, we might have in that cohort, they may have three kids on one day and four kids on another day. In that case, those cohorts can easily be combined and come in four days. But we do have some cohorts that have as many as eight or nine students in each cohort, meaning that that would be 18 to 19 students. And depending upon the building, depending upon the classroom, that may not necessarily be possible to put all those students in that classroom and maintain the three feet of space. So that becomes an ongoing challenge. But what I can tell you is, is that as we move into the three-foot space, when we move into three-foot space, we will expand our occupancy of our classrooms to the largest number of students possible within that three feet. Will we go beyond, will we go less than three feet? Certainly not. But we certainly can go to that now that we have that duck and cover. That will be what we will recommend. And as such time that our community rate is in the moderate or low range, we can move forward with that. So those are, and finally, in my letter, what I will also note is, re-link the survey that we put out several weeks ago with a deadline. To date, we've only had about a little over 1,000 responses to that survey indicating whether folks would be planning on keeping their children home for the remainder of the year. That's really critical data, because it helps us really zero in on what our onsite cohort will be and enable us to understand how many students we can and will be able to put in our classrooms. I would say it's fair to say that May 1st, when we talk about approvals, when we talk about a projected improvement, and I think that that's, you know, to me, what is sort of, the word I'm looking for, imprudent, if you will? When superintendents are laying out timelines and saying, well, this date, we're going to do this, and yet at the same time are couching it within, provided that the level of community risk is this. So, you know, and then that deadline could come, and the community might not necessarily be at a lower level of risk, and then that date comes and goes. So I will, though reluctantly so, put out a date of May 1st, because I think that it is, it is very probable that we'll have the necessary approvals in place, and it is possible that by May 1st, between the vaccine administrations and warmer weather, that we could see conditions in May 1st that would allow for additional occupancy of our buildings. But presently, we're focused on getting as many students in within the six feet, and those students who are in greatest need of additional support. And I would just, I don't know if the board wanted to ask any questions before I turned it over to Ms. Mendez and her team on Middle School Honors?
Thank you, Dr. Kascón. We'll go around to the board. Ms. Werta, any questions for Dr. Kascón?
There has been some concern among the parents for their social, emotional development of the kids, and I know it's a bit tricky because we're not in the school buildings, but with the warmer weather and other, I know with everything being up in the air with sports and everything, are there other opportunities that we will be able to give our kids, you know, who might not be in sports, and, you know, still to have the opportunity for interaction and seeing their peers?
Thank you for that question, Ms. Werta. Yes, that, you know, some of the, some of the additional, the additional opportunities that we're looking, that really, we've, you know, Mr. Mendez and I kind of presented a charge to the building principals to really think creatively as we move into the warmer months in additional opportunities that we could afford students. And so, you know, some of those are, you know, outdoor activities, class celebrations, and things of that nature. So those may vary from school to school, but those are opportunities that, and, you know, so onsite small group instruction for intervention enrichment, social, emotional learning activities, celebrations, and whole-class bridging ceremonies. So as the, as the warmer weather improves, you know, those types of things will be encouraged and organized, though I don't have any specific examples of that at this time, but that is a good point, and yes, that is part of the plan. K-6?
Thank you so much, Dr. Kascón. I don't believe I have any more questions in regards to that. Oh, actually, one more. There was a concern for also the students who are not lagging or falling behind academically that still need this type of enrichment. I think it still goes hand-in-hand with that, you know, those different onsite enrichment opportunities to, I know you say you don't have any specific details, but maybe, is there an opportunity for maybe the local PTAs to step in and be able to fill in those? I think some PTAs have been hesitant to do these kinds of activities. I don't know if there's a way that the PTAs would connect with you or the building principals to get those kinds of approvals or recommendations on how to proceed if they do want to do these kinds of activities?
Yeah, you know, I think that, you know, the PTAs, as they always have been, you know, even, you know, when we were in, you know, in, you know, brick and mortar, were tremendous at, and continue to be, in thinking of outside-of-the-box ideas. What I would say is, you know, I know building principals, PTAs have ideas, you know, bring them to the building principal. You know, obviously, we want the school and the school district to be, you know, heavily involved in supporting the PTAs, not only in kind of the deliberative process of this is something that can be done safely, but also then when it is administered, you know, that we're lending whatever resource support we can to make sure that it's safe. I think, you know, the reality of it was, is that, you know, everything, when the weather was nice earlier in the year, I think everything was so new. I think, you know, the, the reality of it was, is that, you know, everything, when the weather was nice earlier in the year, I think everything was so new. That, you know, we didn't necessarily have the, the impetus. And didn't have a comfort level of like, hey, let's, let's try and do some things. And then of course the cold weather hit, but I think now as we move into the spring and we're a little bit more, we have a better understanding of this. And, um, we have a, a real, a real motivation to try and, and create opportunities for kids. That we can, um, and we can do it safely.
Thank you, Dr. Kaskon. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Ms. Merklinger?
Sure. Um, so, you know, Dr. Kaskon, obviously there's a lot of community discussion about this. And, and for lack of a better way of putting it, it sounds like we keep moving the goalposts. So it sounds like every time there's a change where we're making quote unquote excuses for why we can't return to school, um, whether it's full days or half days with Fridays being, um, a synchronous day. And, you know, I, I do want to just point out that, you know, while I understand what the building principals are saying. Can we get a little bit more clarity about Fridays? Because, you know, as many know, I'm involved with our youth sports in town. And, you know, I ask the kids all the time, how's school going? How's this? You know, how's that going? And every, I, I can say without a doubt, at least ninety percent of the kids who are in elementary school say to me, oh, Fridays are awesome. I'm done with school by nine thirty AM. Like I'm done. I, you know, I'm, I'm playing with my friends. So, uh, you know, is there the possibility to maybe look at how Fridays are utilized at the different grade levels? So maybe, I understand high school, uh, Fridays is a lot of the lab work that's done and makeup work. So fully understand that, but at the elementary schools, it seems that we're not really pushing our students. And, and, you know, I have to wonder then how does it count for a full day? It does seem like a lot of the work's being done within the first, um, half hour of the morning. And whether, you know, this is all, you know, obviously this is anecdotal, um, and coming from kids and their parents. But I'm just wondering if, if there's, you know, something we can do to help students who are, you know, the average student or those who are excelling. Who are looking for more of what they could get, um, onsite instruction and, and what do we have planned for that?
True. So, so I'm going to, I'm going to just kind of thank you, Ms. Merklinger for that question. I'm, I'm going to handle the, the, the moving the goalposts piece. And then, um, Mr. Mendez, might I, um, kind of lateral that ball to you to just talk in a little bit greater detail? As a matter of fact, why don't we start with Mr. Mendez and I'll, I'll circle back. I, I know you can speak a little bit more specifically on the instructional side of, of, um, not only the various related services that are offered on Fridays, which if we were to go to synchronous or a full day. Again, as I stated in my, in my report, those would be pushed into the instructional days. And students we pulled out of instructional time, but, but above and beyond that, talk to us a little bit about what that, what that instructional day looks like on a Friday.
Sure. So at the elementary level, uh, the day does begin with the teacher starting off all of the students, uh, to review their day. Uh, it is asynchronous work, uh, in terms of the content. And therefore the teacher meets with students the first hour, if you will, it, that can, uh, differ based on grades. In kindergarten, that might be thirty minutes, for example. Uh, but they meet with the students for the first hour to review what their day is going to look like. Uh, as it relates to assignments, as it relates to content, as it relates to expectations and homework. Then the students are asked to complete their, uh, work. It's in Google Drive. There are videos. There are uh, assignments that the students have or project-based learning, uh, for each content. Uh, it would be around thirty minutes of instruction that is, um, uh, afforded to the student again asynchronously. In addition to that, we have a, a whole host of, um, uh, services that are being provided to the students. So if we're thinking about our gifted and talented students, we have gifted and talented instruction on Fridays. We have enrichment on Fridays. We have all of our intervention on Fridays. Our teachers also pull small group instruction for students. Based on whatever strategies and skills that they're working on at the time in order to further support students. Students can come in for, uh, help with and support with their work. Uh, and so then there are many different services that are provided on Fridays in terms of content and support. We also have on the related arts and our instrument is pushed through, right? So our instrumental lessons are pushed through on Fridays and as Dr. Um, Kaskon discussed, all of our related services. So OT, PT, speech, um, these different things are happening. We also have INRS on Fridays. So all of our INRS meetings, uh, with parents, students. Really, uh, when teachers are meeting together to think about how do we, uh, put in the appropriate interventions, uh, to support the students. Those are taking place on Fridays. What we've done with the schedule is in order to protect the instructional time Monday through Thursday. We've placed all of these things on Friday so that no student is pulled out of, or are minimal. It would have to be something significant, right? Uh, for a student to be pulled out of their instructional day. So Monday through Thursday, then, uh, that instructional time is protected. It is dedicated specifically to math, ELA, science and social studies. And lastly, when we think about what it would look like to return on Fridays in person. Because of, uh, still we are in cohorts at the time until, uh, further decisions are made about a potential for decreasing the social distancing parameters and see how much of an impact that does have. What we would have is alternating cohorts. So, um, on a, on one week, on a Friday cohort A would come and then on the subsequent week cohort B would come. When we weigh, um, students coming in for a small portion of the day, um, on a Friday, every other Friday. In comparison to all of the services, intervention, related services that are provided on that Friday. We really do believe that we're better reaching a large majority of our students when we're providing the services that they need in terms of intervention and, and the things that we've explained, right? So, uh, we'd like to continue with the Fridays in order to support our students. And as we do, uh, move toward, uh, reducing these social distancing parameters, if that's what, where we go. When we get into the warmer weather, then we can add, uh, what we're doing on Fridays for onsite. So it could be, uh, more enrichment for our more advanced learners. We can add opportunities there. When the weather gets warm, we can, uh, think about tents and having times where students come in to read. Or physical education actually outside in the field. So we are discussing the different ways that we can get more onsite, uh, instruction opportunities, enrichment for all of our students.
Ms. Mendez, I just wanted one follow-up question for you. Can, can you give a little bit more, a little bit more texture on the, on, on those? And, and we have some supervisors on. I don't, I don't know if we have anyone that can speak to the elementary perspective, but, you know, those asynchronous. You know, and you might've mentioned it. So, so that asynchronous day involves a, um, a module, if you will, for each of the core areas?
Yes.
And, and each of those, knowing that different students finish things in different times, but each, each of those modules is here to, 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 to take approximately?
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes.
A little less at kindergarten.
And so, and so between the, the, the teacher time, now does a teacher circle back at the end of the day?
The teacher does not circle back at the end of the day on a synchronous platform. The teacher does circle back through Google, um, through their Google Drive, through the feedback that they're providing the students on their work.
I mean, and not to, not to throw you a curveball, not that I need an answer to it at this time. But might that be something that we could consider as an end of the day checkpoint?
We could look into that.
Okay. Ms. Merklinger?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, definitely I disagree, um, because I don't think with the number of kids that I interact with and the number of parents that have come to me. I, I really don't think that they're getting thirty minutes of work in each of the subjects. And I, and I have to question, you know, just Fridays alone. I, I appreciate that all these other resources are available, but what about your middle of the road student? What about your average student who in, does not utilize any of those services? Are we doing them a disservice by not having full, you know? And, and I'm not one to say, oh, look at other districts, but it's hard when you do see other districts of our size in our area. Private schools in our area who are going five days a week and are seemingly able to have, um, productive days. To be able to serve and provide the services that we're providing. Um, and I think our community is just really struggling to see why we're having such difficulty doing that. So with that, I would just say, you know, I, I did hear Dr. C mention about, um, a new plan. And, and I'm just wondering what the timing of that is that we're going to see that. Are we expecting to have something for, I know you said May first, but are we planning to come kind of roll out something or come up with a, a, a new? You know, combination of cohorts now with the three feet being eligible. Are we looking to do something right after spring break? So I know we're taking that two-week quarantine, which I think is, is a smart idea, right? So we don't know where folks are going to be traveling to, um, so it makes sense. But I know when we come back from that two weeks, are we expecting to kind of, because that's right, pretty close to that May first date. Are we expecting to have a new plan for the community to, to, uh, review and maybe question?
I got it. So, um, so, so I think this, this kind of is a good segue back to the goalposts. I, I think the, the, the problem is, is there, there's, there's a lot of people move, there's a lot of people attempting to move goalposts. I haven't necessarily been one of those. In fact, I've been trying to keep the goalposts stable and steady. Because, and I've tried to keep the goalposts aligned with the guidelines which have been provided to me. Not, um, using subjective, you know, medical layman, um, judgment to move them. You know, trying to be, uh, be prudent, um, in, in expanding and augmenting, but at the same time not using my discretion, you know, which is, is not really my discretion to use to change things. You know, the, the, the CDC has sort of moved the goalposts now. We, we, you know, we, we thought that they might, and they did. Our governing authorities have not moved the goalpost. So technically, I'm under no obligation by virtue of the governing authorities of the state and public education in the state of New Jersey to move the goalpost. That being said, I understand that the end of the day is a superintendent. You want to make sure that if you make a decision, that it has, that it's defensible. That it's not opening the board yourselves up to liability. That it is not placing staff and students in undue risk. And I think it gives me a level of confidence that the CDC has gone out and said this now, has finally said it. People have been talking about it for months. People, non-medical health, non-public health experts constituents have been talking about it. But the CDC has finally moved the goalpost. And so now we can start to understand, well, now that they've moved it, what does that mean? And I've explained what really what, what its impact is. And it, it doesn't, to, to simply say that, well, they made it three feet and now everybody can come in. We can bring all of our students in every day, all day. That might be the hope, but it isn't the practical reality of what three, going from six feet to three feet does for us. What it does do is it enables us certainly to bring more students into our classrooms on a daily basis. In terms of can the district understand what a change in plan is? You know, I spoke to that a bit in my report, which is the district has already made changes. Which is that, um, you know, one, one of the, um, the, the, uh, the pieces of feedback that we've heard stated by community members is like, kids are struggling. Okay, um, some are. Um, and so now we're placing a priority and a focus on those students who are really struggling. Academically, socially, emotionally, maybe with extreme family hardships. To get them in, to prioritize them and to, to, to go to maximum occupancy at six feet. We will continue to, actually in that case, yes, we will move the goalposts in that case. When we get, you know, when we're able to go to three feet. Now, um, I, I don't think I'm, I'm making excuses, with all due respect. When I say that are, that, that when we go to three feet. It will be done when the public health environment and level of risk, according to the CDC guidelines. Gives us the, the clearance to do so. And so what I've said is, is sure, I, I can put out a, and, and, you know, a tentative timeline for when we're going to do this. But that would be to have a crystal ball and know that in May, we're not going to be in the high-risk range anymore. Now, I know that there are folks that think we should move forward regardless of whether we're in the high-risk range or not. And, you know, I'm not one of those people, um, because that's not what the medical and public health guidelines tell me. So, uh, we will continue, what I can tell the parents is that we will continue to expand as much as possible occupancy. And we'll continue to expand as much as possible opportunities for students to be, uh, to be onsite. And I do believe that following spring break will be when we start to realize some of these changes. Namely compressing cohorts at the high school, um, and, you know, expanding our cohorts in the other schools.
That's, I mean, that's, that's, I think, great news. I mean, I'm definitely one of the folks that, you know, you get to complain about something for a minute, but then you have to come up with resolutions. So it's, it would be, I think, beneficial if we can hear, um, and I don't know, uh, other than, you know, obviously the, um, the safety of our students and staff is of utmost importance. But I think just in terms of what are some of the other barriers that we may be seeing? How community members kind of maybe understand what is, I don't want to say holding up or moving the goalposts, but some of the things that are barriers, I know, you know, folks in the community definitely want, we're a great community, right? Everyone wants to help out and if there's barriers that we can assist with in trying to, um, help move us forward. Are there anything that parents can do, uh, or any community, you know, the community can do? To help us as a district move forward or with some of these plans? Now the CDC has changed it to three feet and said that the, you know, where you are doesn't really matter at the elementary level. If you're at high risk, moderate, low, um, so just kind of, you know, maybe for the communities, uh, you know, what, what are the barriers that they could, um, that we're maybe seeing? I know transportation's a big, big hot topic, right? That's one of the factors that we need to consider. Um, lunches and eating, that's another factor that I can think of. But are there other things that may, along those lines that maybe the community, um, doesn't know about? You know, the, you know, it's very easy to say from a, a six hundred feet away, what's going on from their homes. But what are the things that we're seeing at the school level that may be hindering some of the moving forward plans?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think when you look at the, the current distribution of models within the state and kind of the most recent statistics. Release, you know, you see, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, over five hundred districts. That are presently, uh, delivering hybrid. I think there were ninety-two that are continued to be fully virtual and about a hundred and twenty some odd districts that are full in person. But, you know, when you look at those districts, to give you an example, Roseland is one of them, is a district that's been in since September. And I think Roseland has three hundred students. You know, I don't even think they bus, right? So, you know, so when you look at those hundred twenty that the data in, do they look like us? Um, and I know that there are districts, surrounding districts that have, um, that have put forth, uh, plans. But, you know, putting forth a plan and then ultimately being able to realize it because under public health guidelines you're able to do it are two different things. And that's just a different, that's a stylistic thing. You know, does it, will it, will it make the community feel better if I put out a timeline? And then it's a timeline that we're not, and then a date comes and then it's like, no, we're not doing it. And then all of that, you know, and I understood that, like when we, when we unfortunately had to do that a couple of times earlier in the year. You know, for our kids, a, above all, I think that, that's what really hit me as a superintendent was when I got emails from parents and said how disappointed their kids were. When that date came and went and we didn't do as well, we were going to, but now we didn't. Um, and of course, it, we barely understand the public health implications and guidelines, let alone a seven or eight-year-old. All they know is that they were supposed to go in on May first and now they're not. So that's a stylistic thing. I'm like, you just, it's just a, a different style for me that, you know, when I communicate something, I want to be reasonably comfortable and confident. That it can happen. So I'd, I'd rather say to the community, um, we are going to continue to monitor the, the level of risk. And that's true. You, you, you have astutely noted that the CDC, you, 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 you've been clearly have been reviewing the CDC guidelines very, very carefully, Ms. Merklinger. That, that technically, um, you know, you, you, you can close that social distance regardless of the level of risk. And far be it for me to disagree with the CDC. But, but that's hard to reconcile, that you could be amidst the highest level of risk and be like, nah, close the distance. I know we, we've been talking about six feet, but it's actually three and yeah, pack as many kids as you want in the classroom. Doesn't matter what the community risk is. That just doesn't make sense. But it doesn't have to make sense to me, but ultimately that would be something where I'm gonna, I'm gonna make that commerce. I'm going to make that decision with the Department of Health and to make that decision with the district physician. Of, you've heard the CDC guidelines and, and that will be reflected. that will be reflected in our in our revised plan to the state is like, okay, state, you approved it the first time, we're going to move forward, closing the 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 social distance at three feet on the elementary level, not predicated on level of risk. You agree? Maybe they will. But I really do feel that it's in the board's best interest that we have the support from our governing agencies before we move forward with with a with a move like that. But that's just a style thing, Ms. Merklinger. I mean, I, you know, I can put out a theoretical timeline, you know. But ultimately, I think if we're not able to meet that, you know, it's even a greater disappointment than not having put one out at all. But, you know, if it were the, if the board ultimately in conferring with the board, if the board felt that that was something that they wanted me as the superintendent to do, I'm here at the will, the board be happy to do that.
Yeah, no, I think that makes absolute sense. And I'm definitely one that, you know, felt it a little bit, you know, in November when we didn't get to, you know, I felt I was like, oh, man, like, we didn't get to do this for the kids. And maybe if we could just speak to you a little bit, I think this is all really helpful for everyone to hear. But maybe speak to, I know there's some concern whether it's correct or not that schools are transmitting, right? So there's been outbreaks, quote unquote. And from what I understand, we haven't had real outbreaks in our school district. So I know, and I know we have the dashboard, so maybe just if you could speak a little bit to how that's looking. And I think there's, I know I did have a question about hybrid versus virtual. So if a student is virtual or I guess, let's say they're they're a hybrid student. And while, you know, maybe their their cohort has to quarantine and now they're virtual and how is that captured if they were to be exposed later on, if they're a virtual student, you know, a hybrid student, is it captured as virtual or is it captured as hybrid? So, you know, like, like right now, where there's a high school was shut down, it was closed. Not all those students were hybrid or, you know, not all those students were virtual, some of them are hybrid, but not part of the or not exposed, I should say. So if we could speak to kind of how that transmission is looking and what the the dashboard really, you know, for folks that are a little confused, but we're how we're capturing information.
Sure. Great questions. So so you know, our, you know, our data would would indicate that we are not seeing a large, really seeing very little transmission in schools. But because we're not doing any kind of kind of comprehensive testing, it's difficult to ascertain that definitively, but at least on the surface level, through our contact tracing, it is not, it's certainly not readily apparent that the transmission is happening in schools. Most of the, most of the folks, kids and staff who are, I would say, the best of my knowledge, we've only had, best of my knowledge, one case of school transmission. And it was at the very beginning of the year. And it was actually between two staff members between before students were even in the buildings and the one staff member who gave it to the other had gotten it, contracted it outside of school. So the best my knowledge, the the research that 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 speaks to low level of school transmission, we're seeing that borne out in, you know, in our district and our operations. But what we see is, is that regardless of where they contracted it, if they're in our schools and they have it, then that, you know, that necessitates a quarantine. Now, what we did on our dashboard, because we did, as we were starting to see a fair amount of cases were just cases amongst students who were virtual, we made that adjustment in our in our dashboard to note when the student was virtual or whether they were in hybrid, whether they had and they weren't in our buildings. When they are virtual, there's, other than informing the school, they'd let us know. Beyond that, where there's no contact tracing that's necessary on our end, the the local DOH might do contact tracing. And there's certainly no quarantines that are required or class closures or school closures that are required if the student was virtual. And we do see, I would say, we probably have a relatively even distribution between students who are hybrid and students who are virtual. I haven't looked at the dashboard in the last day or two, but just anecdotally, I think it's pretty much balanced between virtual and hybrid students.
And the dashboard also includes staff. So I know we've, I believe there's also been some staff members, whether it's teachers, faculty, whatever, that have also fallen into this. Are they being captured in that dashboard as well or is it strictly students in the dashboard?
On on, they're being captured. They do, they do count on the dashboard. We don't, we don't delineate on the dashboard because we feel that we're we're skirting a little bit with potentially with confidentiality there. People could kind of ascertain by process of elimination, but we do keep all that data on the back end. And we also are obliged to also report all of our cases to the state, which our nurses have been doing each time we have a case and they denotes whether it's a staff, whether it's a student and so on and so forth.
Thank you. I think that's, that's helpful for some of our, you know, especially for myself. I was trying to understand that a little bit. And then just, I promise this is my last question. We've gotten, I think we've gotten some emails from parents who are a little confused about when it's communicated out to the school versus the class versus the cohort versus the entire community about about, you know, an outbreak, but test, positive tests. So where there's a need for quarantine, I think there's just been some confusion over who needs to be notified, when and and how that's working. So if you wouldn't mind just maybe try a little bit clarity, I think we've gotten a lot of questions about that recently, so.
Sure. Sure. I love showing off my public health knowledge here. I'm really becoming a, not an expert, I might. But I know a few things. So so let me, let me start at the beginning here. So technically, technically, you know, the the by by CDC guidelines, DOH guidelines, the only people who were obliged to notify are those people who are identified through the contact tracing interview as being close contacts. That's actually the only, the only people we are obligatorily required to contact. However, it has become fairly standard practice within schools for there to be wider communication about cases. Now, when we first started out, we communicated district wide anytime we had a case in every school. We scaled that back a little bit whereby we do, we do put the, let's say we have a case at St. Cloud. We will put the St. Cloud letter on the website, but only the St. Cloud parents and the St. Cloud staff will get a letter directly to them about the case. It will, and then, of course, obviously be reflected on the dashboard. Moving forward, however, and this was based upon some, I would argue, some, some, some good feedback, is that certainly when we have a school closure, you know, that will be something that we we communicate to the entire district. We will not communicate to the entire district when we've quarantined a cohort. But certainly, like in the case of the high school, when we closed that, that communications, case of a school closure will go to the entire community. So that's, that's essentially our communication protocol at this point.
Thank you. I think that's helpful for our community, you know. So thank you for answering all my questions.
My pleasure, Ms. Merklinger. Thank you for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger and Vice President Tony Cliff.
Thank you, President Trick Scales. Also, thank you to Ms. Merklinger for some of the questions I had. Especially that first one, I had I had the same concern. So I appreciate you asking that. And thank you, Dr. Casco and Ms. Mendez for your responses. I appreciate that. I did want to ask, in terms of you, you did say students are being pulled in who need to, who are coming into the buildings who need more support. It sounded like there was a lot of our special needs population in that. Are there, does that also? You did reference the seniors who might be in jeopardy of not making graduation. But does that also include general ed students who are, you know, and if so, how are, how are they notified? How are the, are the parents notified? I just wanted to understand a little bit about that process.
Sure. And that's one where I'm, you know, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lateral the ball over to Ms. Mendez. She was, was very, very closely involved with the principals in kind of developing those criteria in the process. So I'm going to ask her to expand upon that. Ms. Mendez?
So the priority focus is on specialized populations. That doesn't mean special education necessarily. It could be any student in a specialized group like ESL, like BSI, like the seniors, like a student who's in crisis. And so then principals are working very closely with teachers to identify those students and with parents as well. So when parents in their meetings identify, these are the things that are, my student is really struggling with. And we see that it's a I don't want to say a greater concern than anybody else's, right? But but we are looking to prioritize who has the greatest need for onsite support. And that could range from special education to basic skills to ESL. Again, to students who are in crisis, students who really are needing the social and emotional support in a very clear way that's, you know, it's producing something that's undesirable. And so then we're, we're reaching out to the parents, we're reaching out to students, to teachers, and those students have already started. So back to Ms. Merklinger's prior question, we've already started reaching, we already have students who are attending four times a week from K through eight based on this criteria. When we return from the vacation, we continue to add to that based on how many students have opted to stay full time remote. So what we're doing is the principals are surveying classrooms. And let's say a classroom can hold with social distancing 10 kids, but there's only three kids. So we know there's seven slots in that class. And so then they're going down their priority list, right? And making sure that we bring the classrooms to capacity because there are students at home that is happening. K8, it is gradual, right? Because as we identify, then we reach out to students. So you may have some that are starting on a Monday, for example, and then we continue to identify and new students starting on a Wednesday. By the time we come home for, from the break, the high school does plan to collapse cohorts. And so then that's scheduled tentatively begin April 19th through May 1, increasing as again, the the classroom space is identified and available. And if we then move to from six feet to three feet, then we will move in that direction. Right now, what the principals have done is they've looked at their size of the classroom, how the desks are spaced apart with plexiglass, for instance, and how many kids can now fit in that class with three feet apart. So we're preparing that so that when, you know, the go gets pressed, right? The button gets pressed that that we're ready to go. And so that's what the principals are working on right now. As Dr. Casco did say earlier, there may be the misconception that moving to three feet would get us all kids back, and that is a misconception, right? But it will get us more students back, much more, not all.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, can you also refresh my memory a bit about, I know you touched on it and I may have missed it, but the afternoon structure in the afternoon, because I know some schools have their students coming in in the morning, they do their core curriculum, and then they go home for sort of the related arts sections. And I'm just trying to remember, I know it's changed a couple of times and I may have, so if you could refresh my memory on that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Elementary has related arts in the PM. It begins at 1:10. So the core is held until 12:10. We have the hour break and then related arts are held in the PM and that would be your music, your art and health and all of those things. PE is core, but it's in the afternoon in the related arts schedule. The middle school runs through the majority of their day and their Fridays are already synchronous, right? So the asynchronous Fridays are at the elementary. And so the middle school does run. We do have Mr. Klempt and Mr. Hush on here. So if there are questions for them, Dr. Casco, and if you'd like, they are here, they could speak to their schedule better. And then the high school is in that 9:30 to 2:30 slot. So they are in the majority of their day with the Fridays asynchronous for science labs, other labs, and again, the interventions.
Ms. Mendez? We didn't prepare for this next question I'm going to ask you, but I think, I think it's, it's, I think it's going in there. I think I'm curious, and I think the folks on the call here on the meeting would be interested. Just to kind of let the line out on this conversation a little bit. Let's say for, in this, it's really segue from Ms. Tonakliss's question about the afternoon. Let's say, hey, we wanted to keep kids there for the whole day. What, what, other than the lunch piece, which I think is the weather gets nicer, we could probably work out, it's not raining, but we could probably work that out in some way. What other complications are there instructionally with the model? And I am not just, we didn't prepare this. I'm literally going off script here. I'm just curious. What complications would there be there if we were to see, keep those kids and they, and they were to basically just be in the classroom for related arts?
So the first major complication aside from lunch, which is major, would be the fact that we have two teachers in the classrooms to assist with hybrid and virtual. So the students that are in person and then the second teacher to assist with the students who are virtual.
In the morning.
In the morning, right? And so then those teachers have classes in the afternoon.
The co-teacher that's supporting has that.
Right. So then we would end up either losing related arts or losing the supports in the morning. And right now we have, I don't want you to quote me, but if I remember the numbers, almost 400 students who are full time virtual. Maybe higher than that. So it is it would be a very big challenge at the elementary level specifically for one teacher to really give and attend to the onsite instruction at the same time as the virtual instruction with those large numbers of students who not only are home, but who have indicated that they will stay home regardless of how many onsite opportunities we have. So today I think we were about, was it 74%? Dr. Casco, if I correct my math right, we were at about 74% of those who've responded, which were about 1,300, maybe a little more, who said they were keeping their children at home. Even if we offered four times a day or collapsed cohorts or, you know, decreased social distancing parameters. Therefore, that support for the elementary is critical. And I think that would be, aside from lunch, that would be the the largest the largest shift in support.
Another question. Now, are related arts teachers sometimes or oftentimes are itinerant, meaning that they travel between schools? Does that, the fact that they're not necessarily exclusively based in the building, does that add a layer of complexity to it as well?
Absolutely, because in any itinerant teacher, they would have to move. Right now, we are limiting the movement with our teachers for safety and by virtue of them being able to provide instruction online, they can reach their students in one setting, one environment. All of the students come to that environment. Also, to minimize the number of students in the related arts sections, we have rotated that in the afternoons. And so then if we attempt to do that onsite, again, we're limited, right? Because you can now not see 25 students in that related arts Zoom call, right? You can't see 25 students onsite. Now, we would be decreasing the number of students that the related arts teachers can see.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. And I just was wondering, are the, I know we talked about the barriers for the desks, so I have a couple of questions around them. What is the overall cost of those? Have we purchased them? And does that allow us to? And now with the cohorts, it sounds like it's going to be difficult to combine even with those, but does that give us any more flexibility in using those to add additional students to the classroom?
It's interesting. I had a parent send me an email that, and I haven't shared it with Ms. Mendez yet because I didn't want her to throw something at me. But there's an interesting configuration, which I had never seen before, which is this, this, this radial configuration where, you know, basically you, you fit the desks together almost like a pie. And then you put the dividers, so students are kind of sitting in this radial formation and then are, you know, and then are within this within the divider. And so, you know, I wanted to to kind of see what that would look like. Does that, does that increase the number of desks we can put in a room? And if it's endorsed, if that configuration is endorsed by the CDC, that might be something we can take a look at. So it's been kind of in my, at the top of my, of my inbox. I think this has become a self fulfilling prophecy. It'll be in the top of Ms. Mendez's inbox within 24 hours. But as far as the dividers go, we, we put up, we, we need over 6,000 of them. And the the ones that I had originally Um and um the the ones that I had originally looked at were like thirty-two dollars a piece. So it would have been almost, it would have been hundreds of thousands of dollars. I found a one that's a much more reasonable price point, it's twelve bucks. I got a couple of samples of that that I currently have principals uh trying out. Um and I just asked the vendor for the quote this evening to know what that would cost. There are two different qualities, one is more of like a uh conventional PVC clear, and the other one's a little bit more of a um a different kind of uh material. Um but I'm, we'll be able to get it for a fraction of the cost. So I'm just waiting to get some feedback from principals, waiting to get the quote, and then we're we're ready to move forward uh with that. And um, you know, I'm waiting for, you know, for for Ms. Ms. Flowers to fall out of her chair when she gets the uh the proposal.
And that'll be covered under the ESRS two grants or that we've yet to receive yet, or?
No, we'll we'll likely, we'll likely fund that partially out of out of operating and partially out of what's what remains of the ESR one grant.
Okay. All right, let me just see, I think I have. Actually. No, I think the other question was asked in in that I had was um already answered, so thank you very much. I'm concludes my questioning, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President, and Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you, I only have twelve questions. This has turned into something of an unexpected town hall meeting, I think. Um but this has been great, a really, a really great discussion. Um okay, with regards to the Friday asynchronous uh days in elementary schools, I'm making an assumption, but I want to state it and just get feedback if I'm understanding it correctly, that under what we'd call like normal pre-COVID school day, um students in special populations would be pulled out of their regular academic classes periodically, but because the amount of academic instruction hours per day and per week were longer than they are right now, that wasn't viewed as as much of an issue, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
I think we always viewed as an issue, but this time we realize uh how valuable that uninterrupted time is. Yes, Mr. Rothstein.
Okay, great, and then um. So then I'm I'm gonna make an assumption here that um that uh in speaking with with building principals, the question was asked whether it's feasible to do after-hours special instruction um courses so that Friday could remain an open day. Is that correct, or or is it, was it not really feasible for other reasons?
W- we've discussed it at length, um we've looked at as many different ways or scenarios for that. And I think uh for the reasons that we've shared this evening, we we do believe that uh Fridays, uh the benefit of having an alternating cohort onsite uh once every other week for the students would not outweigh the benefits of all of the services we provide on the Friday.
I was hoping in a few minutes I could be smarter than than all of you thinking this through, but apparently I'm not, so. Um there we go, question answered. Last question, um the the process with the State Department of Education, when we submit a plan to reduce the uh amount of distance between students, do they need to come out and do any kind of inspection, or do they review the the documentation on paper and make a decision?
Yeah, it would simply be, um and and it would not require major edits. There would only be really small, small portions of it, you know, that would be edited, which we would highlight. Um and um it would uh it would be just a paper audit of that plan. They would not, they would, I would not imagine, like they did not with the first time around, would come out and do any kind of site inspection.
Got it, thank you both very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. Um I I just want to piggyback on Ms. Marklenger's um concern about the Fridays. And I fully understand what's happening on Friday. But if there was any way that we could, as Dr. Cascon said, have teachers involved um at the end of the day or involved at some other point during the morning for elementary students, so that there is some accountability for the students, so that they are not indeed finishing uh school in a half an hour as they have um reported. Um and we know that some students whip right through the work. Um so if there was some way, um because that has been um a a number of of parents have talked about the Fridays, that they would love to see um more synchronous instruction for their elementary students. Um so if if we can certainly look into that. The other question I had, and I'm going to wrap up, um is there something that we can do, Dr. Cascon? I know that um as a board, we are supposed to advocate um for our district, for our students, for our staff, both at the local level, both at the uh county, state, federal level. Um and I know that the Superintendent's Association takes positions. Is there something that um we can do as a board? Is there something that um we can check with school boards to get our Department of Instruction um instruction, Department of Education to deal with the new guidelines in a more timely manner? Uh yes, the commissioner did say that it will be addressed, but that's six weeks out. Do you suggest that we take any action?
You know, it's a good question, Ms. Trixgals. At first, I'd like to thank um, you know, some of our parents um and guardians and caretakers who I know have been, you know, have been directing advocacy tour at the state level, appreciate that. Um and I think certainly um that um that that can, that can be helpful. I actually think that by holding um, maybe a bit more diplomatic in the statement, um by asking our partners in the state to weigh in on our proposed changes to our plan, um we actually, and if superintendents begin to do that, um and basically put the state in a position where they, by virtue of their review of the plan, um have to weigh in on that, I think that's the best lever. But amazingly, superintendents have not been placing the onus on the State Department of Education to actually make that call, which absolutely they should. Uh I think that's the most, and and maybe by virtue of speaking publicly here, and I might have mentioned it to a reporter today, and my colleagues in the county, I think that more superintendents are gonna start doing that, as opposed to just going going maverick on it and and, you know, and just, you know, just doing it in consultation with local Department of Health, say, we have the support of the local Department of Health, we're now seeking the support of the New Jersey Department of Education. Um do you support closing the social distance in alignment with the CDC guidelines on the elementary level to three feet, notwithstanding the level of risk in the community? What say you? Yay or nay? And then essentially, you will have had the alignment of the state guidelines with the CDC guidelines by virtue of the state's approval of those of those modifications. I think that's actually the best way to make it happen.
Thank you, and I also want to thank our parents who have reached out to our um our representatives in Trenton, as well as the Commissioner of Education, McMillan, and to Governor Murphy. Um so great. Okay, so Dr. Cascon, you're ready for uh part two?
We are ready for for part two, and um to our our honors, our people here for the honors presentation, we do, we do thank you for your patience. Um I think it was a really constructive conversation, I hope the folks on the the meeting felt the same way. And at this time, um I will turn over the um the floor, if you will, to Ms. Mendez and the uh curriculum team and middle school principals. Ms. Mendez?
Thank you, Dr. Cascon, and and to our board. Uh tonight, we are here uh to talk to you about our honors program and some considerations uh and proposals that we have um that we'd like to suggest this evening. I am going to ask our curriculum team to uh kindly, uh they can unmute and they can uh turn their cameras on so we can see who's with us. Um we do have our content area supervisors of math, Mr. Ramona Bulakme, uh Liz Veniziano for ELA, uh Stephanie Soriano for uh science, and she will also uh be representing social studies this evening. We have our principals for the middle school with us also, uh Mr. Xavier Fitzgerald for grade six, uh Mr. Lionel Hush for Roosevelt uh grade seven and eight, and Mr. Bob Klempt for Liberty, grade seven and eight. Uh and so this evening, we'd like to uh speak with the board and the public about uh what we're thinking about honors tomorrow. We do have, uh I mean, Wednesday, I apologize, we do have a parent meeting set up uh where we will um share uh our thoughts with our parents, get some feedback, and then um move forward with a proposed timeline based on on those feedback. Uh so I'll begin with uh sharing my screen. A few of us, a few of us will be speaking throughout the presentation, so um that's just for for Lauren, for you to know. And so, um you can see my screen? Yes, all right. Uh so uh each year, we we speak about honors, and the middle school honors program continues to be one that we examine closely. Uh in the district, we offer honors coursework uh beginning in sixth grade up through uh the high school, uh where we then add at the high school level our advanced placement courses. When we're thinking about designing the advanced placement courses to include honors, we're thinking about preparing our students for successful entry into the advanced coursework at the high school um so that they can maximize um uh their their studies there. Uh the honors program at the middle school uh provides students performing above our grade-level standards in advanced course uh study, uh where they are exploring content in greater depth, in greater complexity. Honors courses are offered to students in grades six through eight in ELA, math, um and science and social studies, depending on the grade level. Uh we're looking to advance our curriculum beyond the current grade-level standards. Um we're thinking about um uh the rigor of the content, we're thinking about student independence and um students being able to think critically, analyze, evaluate, synthesize, and problem-solve more complex um work. Uh we're thinking about providing an environment that uh encourages divergent thinking, that supports the development of originality, fluency, flexibility, elaboration. Uh we're developing confidence in our students when they're thinking about expressing their ideas and discussions, and debates, and expository writing, and creative writing. Um also, the process of inquiry through applying uh their skills in investigations of real-life problems and research, uh developing their leadership skills through positive group interaction, and um and of course, encouraging a lifelong commitment to independent learning. And so then, in grades uh six through eight, when we're thinking about honors, we want to make sure that we're offering uh the best program uh for our students and as well as considering uh their developmental level and the transitions as they move from elementary seven different schools into one middle school program and a very unified honors program. So uh this evening, we're going to talk about uh our honors program and some revisions that we are proposing and that we'd like to discuss tonight and on our meeting on Wednesday. Uh some of those include, first, uh thinking about grade six eligibility. As you know, we revised our elementary report card uh to be standards-based, and therefore, we had to revise our eligibility criteria to align to the language of the new report card. Um we also wanted to make sure that we aligned our middle school curriculum and course offerings that are expected by the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and also uh to our high school program. We also wanted to think about a lot of the feedback that we've received over the past few years around how much testing we're doing in honors. Um two years ago, we removed a majority of that bulk testing, and if students uh already met the criteria via the NJSLA and or MAP, then they did not need to test. Um in this uh proposal, we're suggesting remove placement exams altogether um and really just put the emphasis on uh the exams that we already have. So it would be the MAP when we have the NJSLA, the NJSLA, and then a larger emphasis on student grades, since they're already working through content, they're already being assessed in their classrooms, and the teacher is already providing um um input onto the student's uh report card uh as they provide their grades. And so then here, we begin with the West Orange uh Middle School Program offerings. And so then what we're proposing is for grade six, that we continue in math with pre-algebra six, algebra one in seventh grade, and algebra two in eighth grade, um pre-algebra seven and algebra one if a student enters honors in the seventh grade. We would offer ELA honors six, seven, and eight. And then we would begin honors for social studies and science in grades seven and eight, which is a difference. Um we, in prior years, offered um honors in social studies and science at sixth grade, but we'd like to um propose moving this into the seventh grade as a start point. Um and so then, to begin that conversation, I'm going to ask Stephanie Soriano, our supervisor of science, to really talk about the shifts in science and social studies and um to discuss the things that we're seeing in our honors program and why uh we would propose to move uh the beginning of honors for soc- social studies and science to seventh grade. Ms. Soriano?
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Um I'm gonna leave, leave, we can leave that slide up there, it's just a summary. Um but I'd rather, um I'd prefer to kind of talk you through um some of the points, um some of the points of reflection that we've had um as we've um reviewed our our honors program. Um the first thing that that is most striking for students is this shift from fifth grade to sixth grade with regard to how um just the frequency and exposure to the subject matter itself. In both science and social studies, um students will switch um from having fifth grade uh seen uh being in those courses twice a week, as opposed to every day, five days a week. So it's, you know, you're more than doubling the time spent concentrating on that subject. I think the other um, the other shift that will make a difference and just kind of leads to just the shift from fifth to sixth being more challenging as it is, would be that this is the first time that students are being taught by content area specialists in both science and social studies. So not only are they being taught, you know, double the amount of instruction, more than double the amount of instructional time, they're also being taught by um by teachers who have both formal um education and experience in the content area and in the specialized pedagogy of that content area for the first time. Now, our elementary school teachers do a a tremendous job. Um many of our high school students will reflect back to elementary experiences that got them excited about um science and social studies. However, an elementary teacher has other, you know, they're a generalist, and they have other subjects that they're concentrating on. Whereas, when we hit sixth grade, this is the first time that students will be taught um by uh teachers with the specialization in that area. So it's a, it's a different shift because now the, not just the standards um come through as they have for our elementary, but the the nuances that they've developed over the years for um, you know, strategies in their fields of expertise also begin to come through. Um and so the, we look to the standards, they're more familiar with the standards, but the standards themselves are um, you know, there is a higher level of rigor in both science and social studies at the sixth grade level. Um I'll speak to the next-generation science standards um myself. They're banded grades six through eight, so it does not, unlike elementary school, it no longer specifies in fifth grade you will, it doesn't say in sixth grade you will. It's looked at as um a middle school experience. And so um the life science, earth and space science, and physical science is revisited each year with a deeper, more complex understanding. If we begin with a nice foundation in our um, you know, in our sixth grade building, it really sets students up for success. My goal, you know, obviously, is to um certainly, it's the opposite of limiting those spots and those opportunities to study um science at higher levels, is to increase it. And I really see that first year um at Edison as being a a an advantage. Um you know, the structure of our district kind of allows us to capitalize on um providing students with a foundation. And I think that really all, you know, all levels benefit from um, you know, having a solid foundation of what's expected from the standards at the middle school level. Um for example, we have science and engineering. For example, we have science and engineering practices as part of our standards. They run from kindergarten straight through 12th grade. There's a shift for grades six through eight in terms of expectations. The expectations, I think, are really best served and our students are best served by having that first year of understanding what is expected of them at this level and being able to grow during that year and set up more students, hopefully, right? More students for success and for, for the opportunity to study at the honors level. Also, your advantage in sixth grade is that there is the exact same grading policy. Teachers are in the same building, I mean, planning very, very closely together. Their assessments are common. And again, their, you know, their resources just being with each other allow for that first year of science instruction at the middle school level to address different levels of students and to differentiate and help really, you know, each, each student grow and learn during that year and ready themselves. Like I, as I, you know, as I stated earlier, the, the goal is really to have students, as many students as, as we can, prepared for and excited about studying at the honors level in seventh grade. But they will arrive there, you know, with skills that are more honed than, you know, than, than usual. In social studies, let me speak to that. Grades five and six are scaffolded, meaning grade six is a continuation of five. So there's a natural break in the curriculum from American history grades five and six to grades seven and eight, where, well, grade seven specifically is civics. So there's almost a natural break in their standards as well, in a different way. But you see the same, the same kind of opportunity to address students and give them a year of growth in the, in the skills that that area requires.
Thank you. Thank you. So when we're thinking about students moving from fifth grade from seven different schools, science and social studies, two times a week for a condensed amount of time to the sixth grade now, first time transitioning, we now have all students together, but we still have the varied experiences going from two days a week to now five days a week with content at a much higher level of rigor. And we see these banded progressions. We do believe that by offering a strength in sixth grade in a unified program, we can then present a stronger student. And hopefully, our goal would be to enter more students into honors in seventh grade. We think that's, that is the byproduct of that, that that is what that will produce. All right? When we're thinking about honors courses for both general education and honors, we do want to emphasize that both general education and honors courses, we are offering a rigorous curriculum. We are working towards mastery of all our content area standards. We want to prepare our students for success at the high school and we see the different skills that we offer in both of our courses here. Yes, differentiation would be a critical piece. Again, as students acclimate to the middle school setting for the first time, grade six, we'd also like students to be able to focus on, if they're moving into honors, to begin with two courses in honors if they're going, right? If they're eligible for both math and ELA, to begin with two versus four, right? We believe it would be a better, more, a stronger transition to move into the honors program. Gradually, we can focus on ELA and math. Our general education courses will be differentiated to really ensure that we are providing the rigor necessary, again, a unified program across those bands and then bringing a stronger student into seventh grade honors program. For what we are teaching in an honors class specifically, I'm going to ask Ms. Veniziano and Mr. Abu Akhmed to talk about what can we expect the coursework to be like and for the student expectation in an honors, in an honors class.
Sure. So I'll begin. Good evening, everyone. So in an honors class, the coursework begins with grade level standards that drives the curriculum, but also with the honors courses, we want to move the students beyond the current grade level standards because that's what really makes that student the honor student, that they can really understand and apply and grapple with the current grade level standards and also some standards above the grade level. And so with that, to be able to move those students and take them beyond those grade level standards, the curriculum really provides a greater depth and complexity of the study. At some times, the course may move at a faster pace because students may be able to handle and work through the work at a, at a, at a faster pace or they may not necessarily need as much guided instruction in a non-honors or a general education class. Reading for all of the content areas is often completed independently outside of class, where the students will come in with an assigned reading, ready to kind of jump in and discuss or start to problem solve or things like that. And assignments can be at a higher level of difficulty, especially as we move throughout the year. So therefore, you know, with that, with that coursework, that student then should be able to work on skills in the next grade level standards. They should be able to really have an ability to work independently. And they, the, the products that the students provide in their classrooms, whether it's the essay, the lab, the mathematical problems, or the historical thinking, is, the products are more sophisticated, where they have that stronger vocabulary, that more complex thinking and thought analysis. And, you know, in, in all of our classes, as Ms. Mendez mentioned, but especially in our honors, we ask our students to think critically and synthesize the material, you know, a little bit more independently rather than, you know, always with the, the teacher as guidance. Certainly, there is teacher guidance when needed, but probably not as much in the general education classes.
The expectations of the honors students. I think we've spoken to these. They're here and these are posted for our parents. I'm going to move on to the honors curriculum. Can you give us a very brief overview of what this scope of work entails?
So this slide, I think, is, is, would be helpful to parents to certainly kind of read through on their own as each column kind of details the specific content itself. But, you know, you'll kind of see this overall, these, these overall similarities as it's, you know, inquiry-driven, the student product really provides more insightful explanation. Students are really evaluating the credibility of perhaps sources in, in social studies and ELA. Where they will still do that in, in their general education, but perhaps that would be across middle school where we might hit that, the ground running in the, as soon as we kind of move into the honors. You know, a lot of thought and analysis, again, independence, self, self-led research. And of course, for, for math and science, and certainly, Mr. Abu Akhmed can, can add on, but just, you know, more in-depth problems or bringing them to that next level with, you know, some additional extension problems.
Great. And so then we do see a great difference in how we're thinking about honors in math because math has specific pathways that lead to the advanced coursework. So Mr. Abu Akhmed is going to walk us through the pacing guide, six through eight, and how those pathways open up into advanced coursework at the high school.
Good evening. Like my colleague, Mrs. Veniziano, mentioned, the honors share in all different areas, like the rigor, the level of rigor, the depth at which the material is covered, and the real-life applications and the, the work ethics and so on and so forth. In math, it is a little bit special because it's not only that, it goes way beyond the grade level standards. For example, the pre-algebra in sixth grade, it covers most of the standards in seventh grade and some of those in eighth grade. And in sixth grade, it's challenging when the students take the pre-algebra in sixth grade. We need to make sure that they cover the sixth grade standards as well as the pre-algebra and they are ready for algebra one. When they move into algebra one, they're not at the, at the middle school level. They are considered an algebra one student, which is a course offered for ninth graders normally, typically for students in ninth grade. When they are in algebra two, some schools offer it in, in 10th grade, some offer it in 11th grade. So this algebra, the algebra concepts that are covered in these courses, it's not that they're only rigor and they involve depth of material and real-life applications and, and enhanced problem-solving skills and practices, but they are really high school standards. And the other thing is about the middle school, the challenge is starting in sixth grade. The grade band from six to eight is the first time the students that are introduced to abstract thinking. And that's where we start in sixth grade. We start the concept of ratio and rational proportion, and it is concluded in eighth grade. That has to be developed through these courses in the honors as well and, and, and prepare the students for, you know, for moving forward.
Thank you. Could either of the supervisors talk about how we prepare and assist our honors students for independent workloads? And then a follow-up question would be, how do we assist and prepare parents to help their students be successful in their honors classrooms?
I could start about preparing the students for independent work. And just like, for example, math and science could go side to side and Ms. Soriano could elaborate as well. We do include well-structured activities that enhance group work throughout the honors courses, where students have the ability to enhance their classroom discussion and work ethics and organizational skills. And we do include projects and writing assignments that require them to analyze and, and use logic and, and effective problem solving. And we also have a lot of modeling activities to show students how to, like, to approach problems from different angles and to help them manage their, in, in, enhance their management skills and, and time, time management and work ethics. So those are activities that are embedded, not just in the honors, in all courses, but a lot more in, into the honors courses.
And for the parents, how do we assist our parents for how they support their students who are entering honors?
I think with, with all of the classes, you know, at, across our, our middle school and also the high school as well, you know, it's that constant communication with, from the teacher. All of our courses are, you know, begin with some sort of, I don't want to say syllabus because, you know, but a syllabus like you would receive in college, but, you know, more appropriate for middle school, where all of the expectations are lined out and, you know, are outlined. And so, and certainly, our teachers go over the expectations with students, you know, pieces at a time. Certainly, they get to know the students. That's, I think, the biggest piece of, and I think what our middle school teachers do the best when students are transitioning into Edison and then moving into Liberty and Roosevelt, our teachers really do take the time to get to know the students, figure out what types of learners they are, play to their strengths, try to, you know, help them build areas where they may not feel as confident. And our teachers are constantly in contact with parents, whether it is through email. You know, obviously, we all have back-to-school nights where the teachers will outline expectations and things that they can do to support, as well as with our school counselors, who are probably the, the first line where the parents will ask, well, well, what is honors or isn't? Is it totally different? And I think also the, we don't necessarily just throw, you know, books and huge assignments at our students. You know, we do understand that they're middle school students and we want, and this sometimes is, is a very first experience with, you know, something that they, they may be, you know, a little nervous about or they may feel it could be overwhelming. And so there's really a gradual release in all of our middle school classes, you know, where the, the teachers will begin to just start to pull back a little bit and, and as the students are building confidence, be able to, to take on that independence.
Great. Thank you. I'm gonna shift a little bit to demographics. There's been a lot of questions around, well, who's in the honors program? Who does the honors program really see as a student? Whether we're thinking about special education students, whether we're thinking about representation across our, our varying groups. So I'm gonna ask if the principals could speak a little bit to who's in our honors classes. Specifically, do we have special education students in our honors classes? What is our demographic makeup of some of our honors classes? I don't know that if Mr. Fitzgerald is here, if he can turn on his camera. If not, Mr. Hush and Mr. Clamp, would you like to speak to us about who's in our honors classes?
Basically, we do have a very diverse representation within our honors classes. We, we pretty much break down the demographics on a yearly basis to make sure that the, when we're talking about equal opportunity in regards to who's in and who's being offered the opportunity to be in these courses. So we're, we're constantly examining that data. When you speak to special education students, we do have a number of students with IEPs that happen to qualify for some of the honors courses and they are able to, to participate in those courses and have done so since we've been able to offer honors at the middle school level. Numbers are not increasingly high, but they, it is not an exclusive program that is including any members of our, of our population.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add is, you know, our students have access to either one or all four of the honors program. So we do have a, a range of those. Some are handling all four honors and we have others that might just be taking a math honors class. And a small handful are IEP students or 504 students as well. So there's, there's that access. And again, with the math, we do have some entry points at varied levels to, to get into that as well.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to move on to something else that we're actually proposing. Today is about honors, but we're going to touch gifted just a little bit because the way the standards read is that gifted education could be gifted proper or honors, right? And so then we currently have a gifted program at our elementary schools, K through five, and then we begin to move into the honors and the advanced placement and of gift programming, right? At the upper levels, we have a half or a gifted class section at grade six and we have one in grade seven for ELA. What we're proposing is to really make honors ELA at grades six and seven and eight versus also offering this gifted course that replaces ELA. So what we currently have in the district is students enter into sixth grade and they have to choose between a gifted class or an honors class. And those are really two different things, right? Gifted is the way we're thinking, creative problem solving, right? It's a different way of thinking for the student. Their giftedness allows them to really peer into content and into life in a different way. And we would like to address that specifically for the gifted learner. And then the honors student is really thinking about achievement and accelerating in their academic. Right now, as we have it in sixth grade, students have to choose between the two and, and we don't agree that that would be the best way to really service that student. One, they're missing their ELA course, which is a state requirement. And so then they do not have access to all of the ELA standards. We do look at these data and see that the students then are lacking in writing skills and/or writing across the board when we have them choose between the two. And so the third would be that when we're offering gifted in ELA, for example, as a replacement, then the course becomes a very heavy ELA-focused versus gifted, which would allow a student to move into any area that they're gifted in. And so then what we would propose here is that in sixth grade, when students enter, they go into, if they're eligible- if they're eligible, right, to ELA honors. And in addition to that, then we would have a rotation of gifted available to the students through the related arts. So this is not a subtraction, this is an addition. It's aligning to the state standards, making sure students are receiving their grade-level content standards at an advanced level in honors, right, with the honors rigor and the, and the honors critical thinking and emphasis on pushing beyond grade level. Plus, offering a related arts opportunity for gifted students. So Mr. Fitzgerald, could you speak to us about pre-gifted instruction at grade six? Understanding this is an honors meeting, but we wanted to plug it in here because we do think it's, it's relevant. If you could speak to us about that.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. As you guys know, that we do have a, a gifted and talented program at Edison. As Ms., as Ms. Mendez said, that we would infuse our, our gifted and talented curriculum along with our ELA curriculum. And sometimes the gifted curriculum may have overtaken some of the concepts that they need strongly in ELA. And so when I was asked to look at it a different way, what I came up with was putting it as a related art class or course for the students. The students, because our related arts are quarterly, they could either take it a quarter. They could take it, our world language is a semester, so they could take it a semester, or they can take it for the whole year. So when I communicate with the gifted and talented community or students coming to us, we will ask them, do they want to try it for a quarter? Do they want to try it for a semester, or do they want to try it for the whole year? The great thing about this is that we still have the ability to have that student go to an ELA class, a language arts class, or if they qualify for an honors ELA class, that also is on the table, whereas in the past, it was not. It was either gifted and talented infused with the ELA standards, or they had to go to ELA. So this gives us the best of both worlds with this. It really doesn't take much away from the students. Our, all of our world languages, Mandarin and Spanish, are exploratory. Like, for example, on the eighth grade level, it's more of a requirement. On the sixth grade level, it's exploratory. And they also have the same two languages on the seventh grade. So if they wanted to not take the world language, say, skip it for a year and continue on with the gifted and talented course, they were able to do that. And like I said, if you want to do it for a semester, say, for example, for, for grades three to five, they pretty much are taking Spanish as a related arts course. Well, if they want.
And did everyone lose their, okay, I'm sorry, hold on. Let me see, let me see if I can get his attention. Mr. Fitzgerald, can you hear me? Can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear me, Mr. Fitzgerald? Oh, I got you back.
It's more on me, like, this thing's been going in and out all night.
No, it's okay, you're back now.
Okay, I don't know where I left off.
Maybe just back up a couple sentences.
Okay, but it, it gives us the, the best of both worlds, where they still are able to take the ELA class and also continue with our gifted and talented program. And I know, you know, moving forward, that has been a question from my parents in the past. Like, why is it that we are infusing it into a gifted and talented? It has always been there, been there for sixteen years. That's the way they set the program up when I, when I, when I first arrived there. And now we've given the opportunity to look at it a different way. That's going to help the students and make them stronger students, not only in their four core subject areas, but also continue with their aptitude in gifted and talented program.
Thank you. And so similar to the idea with the social studies and science, by bringing all of the students and providing a strong foundation in social studies and science in sixth grade to prepare them for honors in seventh grade, so that we deliver a stronger student into the advanced coursework. The same thing with sixth grade ELA. If now all of our gifted students come into our honors program and now we develop a strong honors student and give them those gifted opportunities, we believe we would have, again, more students in our honors program with greater foundation in grade seven and eight. We've been asked questions about our gifted curriculum. And so then we're thinking about philosophy and logic and how to apply content to psychology, really thinking about global problems and problem-solving, critical thinking. And so then, when we have our gifted parents meeting, we'll really think about the curriculum and talk to our parents about those. And we could also come back to the board specifically around gifted at a later time. But here's just some bullet points around what types of gifted curriculum would take place in this related arts cycle. Now, when we think about gifted in grade seven and eight, we are, again, proposing the same thing, focusing on ELA honors for all of our students and then adding opportunities in the afternoon for our gifted students to include a club that we're developing or designing around dialectical society, which is really thinking about logical discussions of ideas and opinions. We have other clubs, that would be specifically for gifted students. But then we have other clubs that gifted students could participate in that really lend themselves to giftedness, such as academically speaking, our STEM, strategic gaming, which has chess, our totally tech encoding, and our science clubs. So again, this is in addition to, in addition to offering the ELA honors, then we would also offer these extensions in the afternoon to our students so that we can lean into the giftedness of the students. I'm going to move into the criteria, which is pretty much the same. I think what we're really proposing here is to remove all of the honors placement testing, right? There's so much testing. It's hours of, of, for ELA and then for social studies and for science and for math, and then the writing components. And our parents have given us feedback time and time again about these testing. If we're already testing students in their classes, should we not know how they're performing and if they're ready for honors programming? And we do believe that that is sufficient, coupled with the testing criteria that we already have in play. So for grade six math, what we would say for this incoming year or upcoming year for 2021, 2022, we are waiving the NJSLA because it was never administered, right? And so then there would be no NJSLA assessment. For MAP, which we will administer, eighty-fifth percentile or higher. And same with the eightieth percentile for appeal eligibility. Here you will see an alignment to the new elementary standards-based report card. So before, it was that the student had to have an, an A if they were a new student, or a B plus if they were a continuing student. But here, you see three areas in particular where they need to demonstrate exceeding. And the others can be meets, because we're really looking for the algebra strands, right? I'm for the algebra strands here for honors programming. So exceeds in operations and algebraic thinking. The first trimester could be meets, but the second trimester, they need to move into exceeds for numbers and operation, exceeds in fractions, and they can have meets in measurement data and in geometry. Again, just aligning the specific algebra standards for math, for honors placement. And now we don't need to offer an honors placement exam, right? Because here, we already have all of the assessments embedded into the curriculum and into the coursework. The same criteria would apply for grade six English Language Arts. We're waiving the NJSLA. The MAP is still at the eighty-fifth percentile, but now you would see the alignment to the elementary report card for ELA, and that would be exceeds in reading at grade level, inferring language and vocabulary by the second semester of speaking and listening, and by the second semester in writing. Again, no need to administer all of the placement exams, because now that we have a standards-based report card, we can see exactly where those assessments lie and how the student is performing. And then for grade seven and eight, we're following suit. If, if the student is new to honors or new to the district, then on their transcript, we would need to see their prerequisite coursework, an A average or higher in their grade-level math course, eighty-fifth percentile and I-ready. And of course, we're waiving the NJSLA. Do we have new students move into our district who have perhaps been in honors program or gifted programs? At times, sometimes we see that a little more in, in the elementary level than we do at the middle school. It's very, you know, it's not common, but we will examine the transcript. If the students on their transcript have demonstrated the criteria, then we will readily accept them into our honors program. Current students, they have to have a B average or higher in pre-algebra six in order to enter Algebra One, which is the honor sequence for math, and a B-plus average or higher in math six in order to enter into pre-algebra seven. And again, here is the criteria if a parent and student want to appeal.
Mr. Mendez?
Yes.
Can I just ask you a question about that? So, so, so if a student, so if a student meets, meets the, the, the minimum eligibility criteria, why would they need to appeal?
If the student meets the, if a student does not meet this criteria, they would need to appeal. So I'm going to go back to this one, for example. So here, if you see MAP Spring is the eighty-fifth percentile or higher, in order, if they don't meet that, in order to appeal, they at least have to have eightieth percentile. So what we're permitting to appeal is that five percent range, right? We would not have an appeal for a student who is scoring under the eightieth percentile, because at that point, that student would not be demonstrating the ability to enter into an honors program successfully, we feel.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez. One final question. Can you just clarify what the, what the role of teacher recommendation is?
So here, we feel that the teacher recommendation is embedded into the grading. And so then we would be moving away from teacher recommendation unless there is an appeal. If there is an appeal, then we will, of course, reach out to the teacher. But by virtue of the students' grades, now with the standards-based reporting, we feel very confident that now we can see what the teacher has already scored and/or provided input on that report card for the student. And so then we do think that that would be double, right? We don't need it twice. Again, for the appeal, then we would go to the teacher, the principal would have that conversation, really go through student product and see that the student merit the opportunity to enter into honors, even if it's probationary.
Thank you.
Sure. So we've done seventh and eighth grade math. Parents can see and the board can see the criteria. It's similar in format for each of the content areas. Here would be ELA. You would have the science criteria. Again, none of these have changed. The social studies criteria. And then this would be a tentative timeline. By April ninth, we would be sending home letters to our parents, letting them know to sign up for the MAP. Because we are in virtual, we have not administered our MAP assessments district-wide. However, if parents would like their students to enter into or be considered for the honors program, then we'd be administering the MAP the week of April nineteenth and the week of April twenty-sixth. This is tentative, because tonight we have our presentation, Wednesday we have our parent meeting where we're getting our feedback, right? But this is how we would plan to move forward. So by April sixteenth, students would sign up for the MAP assessment. April twenty-third and thirtieth, we would administer the MAP. These are Fridays. The week of May third, our principals would receive MAP scores. We would begin to look at student grades, see which students are eligible, inform parents. By May tenth, begin to send home those acceptance letters. By May twenty-first, we would be thinking about appeals. And by August, we would have our parents informed of the schedules for students in honors grades six through eight. And again, tomorrow, we have, I mean, I keep saying tomorrow, Wednesday, Wednesday, have any? March twenty-fourth, we have scheduled an honors parent meeting. Our incoming grade six, so that's current fifth grade parents, and your child is going into sixth grade from six-thirty to seven-thirty. And then our incoming seventh and eighth grade from seven-thirty to eight-thirty, we've sent home parent letters with a Zoom link. It's the same link to the, to the meeting. And we'd love to hear from our parents and, and get their feedback on Wednesday. I'm going to stop sharing my screen and see if there are any questions. I just want to make sure that I've covered the questions that we did receive. One of the questions was, are the Mandarin and Spanish courses at Edison only for gifted students? And the answer to that is no, that's for all students. The gifted class that would be added to the related arts cycle would only be for gifted. But Mandarin and Spanish are for all students. Again, we've talked about, I think we've answered all of the other questions. And of course, if the board has any other questions here, we will be here to answer those and, and then when our parents ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez and team. We appreciate all your, your insights and information. With that, I would turn it back over to President Rick Skiles.
Thank you, Dr. Caskone, and thank you, Mr. Mendez, and to our middle school principals and all of our supervisors. Very thorough presentation, and I know the board submitted questions early on. And so thank you for addressing some of those, but knowing us, we still have more. And so I'm going to start with Ms. Huerta.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. And always the first one. I always seem to get some more questions after all of my colleagues, and so I just, anyway. So hopefully I can, you know, get some thoughts and questions brewing in your heads, too. So a couple of the questions. I, I was the one that asked, how are we supporting our parents? Because I know that particularly in families that are non-English speaking, perhaps it's a bit more difficult to address the concerns of the parents. They might not be able to fully express what they're specifically having trouble with. And so in terms of, also, I think something that contributes to that is the level of education of certain, some of these parents as well. They have, might not have the same type of degrees or level of education that some of our other parents have. And so just, I know that some of that was addressed in how, you know, constant communication and communication between the counselors. Is there other, I know it's difficult for working parents to possibly have these kinds of constant communications between the counselors and the teachers. They might not respond or have the language to express what their concerns and things are for their, their students. But I know that it's very important for parents across all socioeconomic and, you know, education levels for their children to succeed and be successful. And I think that sometimes they might not have the tools or the resources to do that.
So in addition to the counselors, I think, you know, we have to go back to our teachers who are phenomenal at supporting our students and really reaching out to parents and sending home resources. I think when we're thinking about ESL students or special education students, their greatest advocates are their teachers as well, right? Because we do have ESL teachers that run alongside our students and make sure that they're succeeding outside of their classrooms. I think one thing that has really been of benefit in the virtual environment, you know, amidst all of the not positives, is that we can meet via Zoom. And so then, parents, we are seeing so much more parent involvement and teacher engagement with parents because we can work around their schedules, right? It's easy to hop on the call and not hop in the car and have to drive to the school. And so then our, our teachers are really leveraging that to be able to, you know, with our principals, to be able to reach out to our, our parents, communicate, help them understand, et cetera. Mr. Abouakme, do you want to talk a little bit about what you see as how we're supporting our parents as they're really working through this high-level content with students and how, how maybe our teachers are supporting them? And you're muted, by the way.
Okay, yes, yes, the teachers do, starting from sixth grade all the way to the high school and then the math, they are in steady communication with the parents, the posting in, in Google Classroom for all these announcements. And I think like for the honors, this is nothing special. It's, it's just like similar to anything, any other activity that the students might be interested in. They will, you know, post on their Google Classroom and communicate with the students and, and the parents as well. And, you know, emailing, like Mr. Mendez said earlier, you know, having parents, you know, being able to get ahold of parents through a Google Meet or through an email, through a phone call. Much easier these days, and they will continue to do that.
Mr. Hush, do you want to, thank you, Mr. Abouakme. Mr. Hush, do you want to speak to maybe some disparities? I know you've been studying this with your team specifically, right? The disparities between socioeconomic, different groups that really need us to lean into support. How are you addressing that, for example?
Well, one of, one of, one of the things, I mean, this is, this is something that's come up, a concern by many of our teachers a long time ago. To speak to Ms. Huerta's point, sometimes you have families who are working a lot or may have some language barriers or things of that nature. Where we find the biggest deprivation is where you find about advocating for children to be in the honors program. So that's where our teachers, again, on the front line, have, have the biggest, I guess, impact on that. So we empower our teachers and let them know that you can make that recommendation for a child who may not have had that, that person advocating for them to, to, to recommend them into honors classes. So our teachers take that, that responsibility very seriously, realizing that, you know, after the first marking period, a child may not be in honors, but they're representing themselves as an honors-level student, and they make the recommendations to us directly. So not that we eliminate the parent, because then we bring the parent into that conversation, but that initial conversation is coming from, or that initial recommendation is coming from the teachers. And that's something that we echo every year, year after year. We have children who may not have extremely active parents for a number of reasons. And therefore, you, as the classroom teacher, has to step in if you realize a child is misplaced. And, and they're not being challenged to the level that they need to be in, then that's a conversation we need to have. So to speak about socioeconomics, you know, breaking down the, the data as, as we've had, we've noticed that a lot of our families that are, are considered under the poverty line are the ones who are not represented in honors as heavily as those who are not. So that's, you know, we're, we're looking at a socioeconomic gap more than a gap in any other demographic subgroup. So how do we address that? That's, that's the underlying question. That's the, that's the biggest thing. But providing resources to the best of our ability and trying to equal those grounds as much as we can. But to, to the, to the point, our teachers, again, are on the front lines, and they're the ones who are advocating for our children the most in, in this, in this process.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so going off a little bit more on, on Mr. Hush's point, that when we are looking at studies, we notice the disparities between the socioeconomic and the families that are underrepresented are the ones that are falling under or below or at the poverty lines. I think that one thing that has become very prevalent during quarantine and COVID times is the mental-emotional aspect of these families and how these families, I mean, we've all been impacted by COVID, most certainly. But how are we addressing mental-emotional wellness among our honor students? Or, or potential honor students who might, you know, regardless of socioeconomic standing, might be struggling emotionally, mentally, which is showing up in their work, right? So they're rebelling or just abstaining from doing their work and things like that. So how are we able to, I know it's harder during virtual learning for maybe teachers. What kind of support are we giving our teachers to identify this or parents to identify this? Or even students to like reach out to their teachers to, to, you know, ask for help? I think that that's the hardest part among people who suffer from mental-emotional is, is how to reach out for that assistance.
I think that's where you're going to see our school counselors are playing a major role when we're thinking about social and emotional learning, when we're working with our students, where students have been identified by teachers, parents themselves, principals, to the school counselor, to our director of school counseling, and where they're reaching out to those students to really help them in their social-emotional well-being, as well as in their academics, understanding how their social and emotional well-being is impacting their academics and understanding how we can support them in their work. So I believe that the teachers are taking a really close look at the students, both academically and for referral purposes, right? For, to get them to the right supports, whether it's INRS, whether it's the school counselor, whether it's the school principal, who's reaching out to parents to support the students in all of those areas. Teachers are infusing social-emotional learning into the content by virtue of reading or the characters that we're talking about, right? The books that we're reading, these topics come up in everyday contexts. And so then they're using those in order to address and have conversations with our students. We will continue to focus on this. We do understand that's going to be ongoing, and there's, it's never going to be enough, right? But we, we do understand it is a priority, and we are certainly leaning into it.
Thank you. A couple of other questions about appeals. What are the exceptions that can be made for appeals? Like what are, I see that, I think Dr. Kascone touched a little bit about, you know, calling, there's that five percent range for the testing. What other exceptions or considerations are, you know, looked at for appeals? And what are the probationary guidelines for, for that?
I'm gonna ask, I'll ask some of the principals to answer that, as they would deal with the appeals, all right? So CNI really looks at the initial criteria, but then the principals work through appeals. The reason that the principals do that is because in their buildings, they are with the teachers, and they're the ones who know the students, right? So then we can look at this, you know, as you would say, five hundred feet up, right? The, the criteria, but they need to know the students and the teachers and the product and the work and the parents. So principals, if you want to jump in and talk to us about what does appeal look like? And what might probation look like?
Yeah, I'll jump in and say that, you know, our teachers obviously would advocate for any student. They, they see that has that work ethic or they, they have the ability, but maybe fall short within those windows as well. And so again, if the teacher's going to, you know, put stake in that student, that they have confidence in that, you know, all of our building principals at middle school level have that ability to, to bend a little bit, to open up the access to the classes. We hope that once they are placed, we do see that performance. And obviously, we give, you know, that full marking period pretty much at the beginning of the year to, to see how they adapt and, and continue.
I would say here at Edison, we do, we, we kind of monitor the students as they are in our program and those that can possibly go into our program. We take from seven elementary schools. And so the appeals process for the fifth coming into the sixth really happens on the fifth grade level. But once they get into Edison, we monitor those classes for the first two marking periods. We do have an exit criteria for the students. And when we say a student is on probation, at that point, they're assigned additional hours with the teacher after school. And so that way, they're getting that one-to-one tutorial time with the teachers. So that way, they can strengthen some of the weaknesses they may have exhibited in that first marking period or even a second marking period. By the time they get to Bob and Lionel at Roosevelt and Liberty respectfully, most of our students are very strong in their honors, understanding their thinking and how they are performing. They understand it's more of an intrinsic motivation for them. And so they walk into, into Roosevelt and Liberty with that mindset. And, you know, here at Edison, we're pretty much good with the growth mindset and making sure the students understand it's always about continuing the growth in what they're doing. So, you know, I think, you know, I have to concur with what Bob and also Lionel said. Our teachers are really our, our gatekeepers. They really tell us what's going on with the student. And, you know, I ask them specific questions regarding academic progress. You know, do you know what's going on at home? Is there something that we're missing, why this child isn't performing at the level in which they have been assessed at? And so we do have conversations, and it's an ongoing conversation throughout the first two marking periods.
We, we don't, we don't actually call it probation, do we?
No.
Just to make sure. Maybe like trial period, yeah?
Rarely, I mean, maybe the terminology that I'll use with teachers.
No, I got, yeah, good, 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 good.
Okay, I wish we're going off of what Mrs. Menendez, you know, I jotted that down, probationary.
I apologize.
But definitely, so one thing, I, I think this is, this one is a little personal, because we're, we're mentioning lack of work ethic. I have a child who has that, a lack of work ethic. And I think as parents who are maybe higher performing or more self-motivated, sometimes that doesn't necessarily genetically pass on to our children. And so how are we helping to instill that in our, in our students? I know it's something that's difficult, and I know that because honor students, I'm hearing a lot of like independent work, self-motivated. And I think that that's kind of a difficult thing to try to instill in, in children. And so how are we addressing? I mean, not all children, I think that that's something that, you know, it's mirrored and you see it. But how is that, you know, how are we hoping to kind of push that and, and instill that in our students? Not just in our honor students, but just in general as well.
Yeah. I'll, I'm going to start, and then I'm going to ask Ms. Soriano to pick up. But, you know, I, I, I think that's a, a good, maybe not favorable, but a good point on why we really want to build a strong student in their transition from fifth to sixth grade, have a very strong foundation in sixth grade, really harness that independence and that task commitment so that when we enter them into honors in seventh and eighth grade, that they are successful. So by starting with, we have the ELA and the math, right? We work toward that task commitment, developing those skills. Again, we're coming from seven different elementary schools, two times a week to five times a week, right? Much different technical, you know, teacher-specific to the content, high-level rigor. It's a very big difference. So we want to make sure that our system supports making sure that the students are prepared so that way we can enter our students into honors. I'm going to ask Ms. Soriano and then Mr. Abouakme.
Sure. I think, you know, one of the, one of the shifts is, you know, those, those moments that students have when they kind of shift to, you know, that intrinsic motivation, where, you know, curiosity and interest are kind of driving them. One of the things I like about the, the possible change in sixth grade is that, you know, teachers will, will be able to kind of showcase to all students, you know, an assignment like this, a task like this is typical of what you would see in an honors-level classroom next year in seventh grade. And I think, you know, that kind of, it takes away a student wanting to be in honors for the title, and it replaces it with those actual experiences that may, you know, elicit those intrinsic, you know, motivations.
Thank you. Ms. Abouakme? You're muted.
I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you for that question. I love that question. This is, this is one of the questions that is at the heart of what the teachers do every day. And this year, we started in math, starting with the sixth-grade team. And they were faced with a challenge when it's time to send the students into breakout rooms. And the team got together and they started discussing how, I send the kids to the breakout room. I go there, doing nothing. They're sitting, they're not talking, they're not doing anything. What should we do about that? So they start working together, and we start discussing it during PLC. And they came up with a wonderful strategy and a good structure for the breakout room to enhance the work, the, the classroom discussion and the work ethics and the group and the grouping of the students as well, and put them in a way that they could be productive together. And they found it to be very successful. And we use that as a model in the math department through vertical articulation, where the teachers in sixth grade shared with the seventh and the eighth. Then I invited a couple of teachers from the middle school to share with the high school, and it became a very, very successful practice, not just for the honors, for all the classes where the students were taken to the next level to start discussing the problems and talking and, and, and being grouped with students at, at that level. Then start moving one of the strong students into these small groups and go and encourage them by modeling for them as the teachers and allowing them time to discuss and elaborate together as groups. The last couple of classes, like from September, like November, January, the last couple of classes I observed were way beyond expectations. So this is what the teachers are doing, and that's what they continue to do. When there is a problem, they discuss it and they come up with a solution. And thanks to the time that we have for PLC in the middle school. And thanks for the support that we have from the principals for the teachers to do that work. And, and that is very valuable for us.
I think it's also important, if, if you don't mind, can I, can I say something? I think it's also important to, to understand that at the middle school level, there's a lot of growth and development that happens of, of a child. So we have some children who may academically be very strong, may not have the maturity, the mental maturity for an honors-level class just yet. But by the time they leave the middle school, they could be on the honors track. And that's why it's very important to also understand that there are a lot of positions within the middle schools where a child can move into honors. It's not, oh, you have to be in it once you walk into it, or you're, or, or you're no longer, you know, able to qualify. They can go in at the sixth-grade level, you know, sixth-grade level, seventh-grade level, or even eighth-grade level. Or as they're leaving the middle school, they then are recommended for honors because they've reached that, that, that academic maturity to be able to handle that independent work. So, you know, as a parent who's waiting for our kid to get it, and we've all been there. You know, sometimes it just comes naturally with that maturation. And, and then they're, they're right where you need them to be at that, at that point. And that changes for every kid. That, that's different for every kid. But at that middle school level, there's a lot of movement and a lot of development going on for, for our children.
I wonder what independence would look like after we're back in school full-time? And if, in fact, virtual fostered independence in while unintended in a very meaningful way? I, I think for anybody who's doing their dissertation out there, that would be a great question, right? What was, what was independence like prior to virtual and then after? And did virtual actually really increase a student's ability to work independently, right? Very good question. Thank you for asking that. Sorry, my AirPod died. Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
I think that's all the questions that I had so far. Thank you very much to all of the teachers and the, the principals and for answering my questions. And I hope I stirred up some, some questions from my colleagues as well.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. I'm looking at the clock. It's ten o'clock, and we've not gotten to our public, who's being extremely patient. And I know that they have questions themselves. Ms. Marklinger.
So I think if I heard correctly, I just want to clarify. It sounded like we are having parent conferences in evening hours. Is that a true statement?
Parent conferences? Parent conferences are generally held in the afternoon on the three days. But if parents need it in the evening, parents, there are teachers who are having them.
That's awesome news. I think that's, that's something that a lot of our parent community, working parents, definitely appreciate. So that's great to hear that we, we're, have that ability, especially with now being online. In regards to the, the, the honors program, so could you just clarify a little bit? I know this is something, one of our former board members had, Mr. Robertson had brought up over the course of the past couple of years in terms of course selection and students being put in this position where they have to choose between a course they really want to take, you know, two courses they really want to take. So whether it's an art and STEM or, or something along those lines. It, and maybe I'm misinterpreting this, but are we saying that first grade six students would have to choose if they want gifted and talented or a world language, or are they able to do both?
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
They will not be able to do both. They will be able to do a gifted and talented course if they want to do it for a half a semester or four semester. And then they can take a world language the second semester. So, you know, again, it gives them the ability to flow in and out. If they wanted to do it by a quarter, then we'd have to do it from a related art. If they wanted to do it from a semester, then we'd have to do it from the world language.
Okay. And would that prevent them, so if they only, let's say, chose to do gifted and talented for the first semester, would that prevent them from doing it, being a part of gifted and talented in seventh or eighth grade? Or how does that impact their moving into or staying with gifted and talented?
So for seventh and eighth grade, we're looking at having honors. We'd be shifting from gifted and talented by seventh and eighth grade to honors, similar to our high school. So what we're looking to do is prepare our students for our high school program. But at the middle school, we will offer the different after-school opportunities, specifically for gifted and then the other areas that will infuse pieces of gifted curriculum.
Okay, so that, I mean, that, so that kind of segues into my next question of, it, it still seems like then we're making students choose. So if we're providing these opportunities after school, those are extracurricular activities are also after school. So whether it's music-related, art-related, drama, sports-related, you're now making students choose between these gifted and talented, especially for our higher achieving or, you know, our, our very, our students that are looking for that extra work. our students that are looking for that extra work or, um, vigor. Um, yeah, we're putting them in the position where they now have to choose between school or an extracurricular that they enjoy. So I'm just wondering if we have some thoughts about how to work a gifted and talented after-school opportunity with the other activities we offer after school, um, like I said, drama, sports, whatnot. Um, so just not something they maybe have an answer for right now, but just something to consider um, as we move forward with, with some of these ideas. Is there any concern that we're going to be saturating the honors program or the gifted and talented program by, um, removing some of the, uh, criteria that we've had in the past?
Actually, I think we're going to, uh, find that we're, uh, entering the students who are demonstrating that they are ready at that, uh, point to enter into honors program one. Number two, I think that, uh, over the years, we've seen that the NJSLA and over the past four or five years with the MAP, that it's very clear, you know, it's very aligned. We did try for the past few years to kind of move toward this point by saying, if you've met this MAP and NJSLA requirement and the grades, then you don't need to take the placement. And we were right in line. So we, we played that out for the first two years and now we're here saying, we're confident that if we remove this testing criteria, we have enough. We have sufficient data that has shown us that students who are, um, within the eligibility criteria in these three areas, NJSLA MAP and grades, that, uh, the, the placement exam was not necessary. So, uh, we did, uh, pilot that for the past two years and I think we're ready.
Okay. Um, that's great to hear. Um, I'm not a huge fan of the new report cards. I think everyone knows that. I don't agree with them. Um, and as someone who was an honors student and, you know, whether folks believe or not, actually like in fourth and fifth grade, I looked forward to knowing I was going to be in honors in, um, at Roosevelt. I was the first sixth grade class there and I couldn't wait to be in like honors. And part of that is the title, right? Um, do we feel that students are going to be upset with the fact that there's no longer in honors? Especially for those that enjoy science and social studies, that there will be an impact to parents and students who find those subjects to be there really at the heart of their love of education versus a math or an ELA? Um, do we see that being something that, um, could dishearten and demotivate some of our student population?
Ms. Soriano?
Um, I, you know, I, um, I, I hope students have the understanding and parents have the understanding that what, what is taught at, um, you know, in terms of the standards and the content for science and social studies in those, uh, in, in the honors level classes is the same, um, as, as the others. So we, we're still looking to foster curiosity. We're still looking, you know, for students to, um, you know, sh- ask questions and inquire and kind of look around and bring real world experiences in. So, um, I, I don't see it as, um, something that we're sacrificing, um, at all. You know, we're, we're ready to enhance their experience if they're ready for it. And we're ready to help them build the skills to be successful, you know, long term, to, to be in those AP classes down the line and to be, to be confident and successful in those settings.
Okay. Um, just one of the items that I noticed, um, in terms of the appeals, and I know this has come up, um, before, is on the teacher recommendation. Um, and I know that that was a concern for some of our faculty where there was a lot of pressure on teachers, especially if, um, a child did not place into honors or, um, just didn't, you know, uh, you know, teachers felt, I think from what I understood, teachers felt there's a lot of pressure to put that recommendation forth. Um, has there been any thought to kind of remove that piece from appeals?
Uh, so we just removed it in this presentation. We're removing it from the honors process at the, at the very beginning, right? So it should limit what is at the appeals process. Uh, and then the principals will manage that, uh, heavily with supervisors. And then if there's need to further, uh, press into, uh, student product, their work and the teacher to, uh, really understand if their task commitment is there and if they believe they'd be successful in honors. And I think that's a critical piece. Um, uh, when we're thinking about honors and advanced coursework, we don't want the students to go in and then be average, right? We want the students to remain honors in honors, remain at the top, at the top, right? Um, and so then I think that's critical. We don't want them to enter into an honors class and then struggle, um, in that class because it's difficult or because the task commitment isn't there. If they need one more year, that's okay. And we want to teach our students that, right? That it's okay to prepare for one more year and then be ready for that advanced coursework because we want them to, um, excel in that advanced coursework. We don't want them to struggle through it. Especially if they want to take more than one advanced course, right? Because a lot of our students are, are going to be in multiple honors courses and/or multiple AP courses.
Um, and I noticed that it looks like we're starting MAP testing in fifth grade. Is that correct?
For more honors. Okay. Only because we're in virtual, we normally offer MAP for everyone. The reason we're not considering at this moment to offer MAP for everyone is because we were informed last week, this week, this week, Dr. Kev's gone, that we have to give the state assessment. Uh, so, so since we're going to have to give the state assessments, we're not, uh, yeah, we're not thinking about giving MAP as well with the state assessment unless it's for honors.
But normally we would go K to 12.
Everybody does, right? Twice, three times a year. Yes.
That's what I thought. That's what I just wanted to check. I wasn't clear on that, but thank you. That was all I had. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger, and Vice President Tony Cliff.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you all for this presentation. This was really informative. Um, I guess you, you touched on it a little bit and I just wanted to kind of get an overall picture of, um, the one thing I didn't really hear was why are the, why are we making these changes now? Um, I think I heard some alignment with the report card. Are there other reasons, um, that we're moving towards this? Um, it did sound like you were also making a correction, which I thought long needed to be made in between the, the gap between fifth and sixth grade and that jump, um, can be, uh, a little bit steep for, for some of our kids, even our, even those who are really, um, are high flyers and are in honors and trending towards that. But is, are there other, was there another impetus for this? Did I get it all or were there other things?
No, I do think you have it. I think, you know, we've been looking at this for years, right? This is years in the making and we just wanted to make sure we were moving in the right direction. Um, for the past, um, five years, we've been, um, in mega committees with, you know, massive amounts of people who've given us, um, such really great feedback, right? We, we originally thought that, you know, um, uh, it was, uh, always, uh, everybody honors, honors, honors. But we found from our parents that that's not the case, right? They want us to just make the right decisions for the students as we're moving forward. And so then over the years, we're analyzing this and we are looking at our data as students are coming again across seven elementaries into a middle school for the first time. Um, is it a lot of pressure to put on our students to have them in, you know, up to four honors classes? Um, how about us coming together and really just building that strong foundation? Making sure that that transition is successful, right? Uh, and as we do that, allowing, uh, the students the opportunities to build the underpinnings that they need in order to move into these advanced programs. We do believe that we're going to, um, receive, get more students into honors, um, by refining here. And so then I think what you're seeing, Ms. Tonic Cliff, is a few years of reflection, data analysis, um, speaking with our teachers, our, our parents, um, and, and, and now, um, uh, piloting, right? That whole assessment thing, as Ms. Merklinger pointed out, we couldn't just go, you know, from one year to the next. But removing it, uh, and then seeing, did it work? And then continuing to make the decision because we are confident at this point that it will hold.
Yeah. And I like the idea that it's a more equitable way of trying to get a larger pool of students into those honors programs by doing what you just said and kind of looking at how they're trending. Um, so I do think that's, um, a positive step in the right direction. Um, I also just wanted to say thank you for clarifying sort of the, um, the difference between the gifted and the honors programs and kind of the, the difference between being the creative and, and then the achievement focused. Um, so I appreciate that. I think I do have a few more questions. Um, I am hoping that once we do launch this, I would love to be able to have, um, another report, I think, um, to Mr. Hush's point, um, as we kind of look forward. How many students, you know, what, what are the, what is the data? What are we going to look at a year or two from now? How many kids, you know, do we have in those leveling up into those programs, um, because of what we're trying to achieve here, um, with these changes? Um, and the other thing I'd love to hear a little bit more about is, um, when you were talking about the shift in science and social studies, can you give me, um, a little more color on how you're kind of, it's how you're ensuring, um, I just want to find that, um, you're going to reduce that opportunity gap and allow for greater number of students. So I, I know you touched a bit and if you could give me a little more color on that, I'd appreciate it.
I think, I think, you know, um, we will begin by really targeting, um, some skills to bring students up to, um, you know, uh, more of a, a similar level. Um, for example, um, it, with the next generation science standards, we're dependent on, um, skills such as, uh, constructing explanations, arguing from evidence, analyzing data, looking at, you know, more thematic things also, like patterns, um, scale proportion and quantity, um, cause and effect. So, um, the, the, the exposure that students would have is to, is to begin to kind of focus on those and learn about those. Whereas they were present in the elementary, um, classroom, they would be, you know, more, more pronounced um, and more, um, emphasized in the sixth grade. And again, it's because those teachers have the, you know, the background to nuance the, the standards at that level. So, uh, for both science and social studies, it would be, uh, really practicing, introducing overtly and practicing, um, the skills that, um, you know, that, that are in the standards.
Thank you so much. And I do think that was a great point because not being, um, in, uh, education myself, that was, I really appreciated you talking about the content specialist and how that really makes a difference in what the students are learning. And I hadn't thought about that before. So I do appreciate you bringing that, um, to my attention. Um, let me just see, um, I think, let me just see if I had another question. I think you addressed that one already. So, no, I think that's it for me. I think, thank you so much. You answered all my questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice President Tony Cliff, and, uh, Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you so much for this presentation. So, so much of it, I think, did a great job of, um, uh, defining, explaining, demystifying, uh, some of what goes into, uh, uh, defining what the honors program is and, and who the eligible and appropriate students are for that. And it was really very helpful to me in that respect. Um, in the interest of time, just one question that just sort of got in my head and I couldn't get it out. In the appeals, two of the subject matters, math and social studies, require a, a letter grade of an A and then science and the ELA, B plus. Can you, uh, uh, clarify at all what the reason was for the difference in grades there?
Uh, ELA, math, science, social, uh, anybody want to speak about their content area for appeals? There's an A in one and there's a B plus in the other. Who has the As?
The As were, uh, math and social studies.
Okay. Uh, math? For appeals? You're unmuted.
Yeah. Wh- wh- where is that? And, and which page?
Um, let's see. Starting, oh, so the version of the presentation I have doesn't have the page numbers on it, but it's starting in the section of criteria, uh, for students and, uh, oops, nope, I'm sorry, that's not the right section.
So on, uh, the presentation on this, um, is, uh, page 17, Imad, uh, for math. There is a average if a parent is appealing, that the student has to have an A in order for an appeal. In ELA, Liz, uh, B plus for an appeal. Uh, Stephanie, science, B plus for an appeal. And social studies is an A for an appeal. Does that have to do with writing? Can you speak to, um, Liz? Can you speak to, um, uh, the criteria for appeal for ELA?
Okay.
So honestly, I think that might be just a, a, a miscommunication as I believe it was A across the board, um, as we, that was what we had done last year.
Yeah, but for math, if you look at the, the top, the requirement, it didn't change. It's, uh, they have to have A in the course and to appeal, they have to have A. The only difference is the 80% uh, in the I already.
So I think, um, Mr. Rothstein, you might have picked up, uh, maybe a typo in our thing. I'm going to go back with the team. We apologize. I'm going to just make sure that we understand what the question is. I understand that you're saying that, um, for the appeals process and some of the content areas, the grade requirement is an A and in others, there's a B plus there, right? And so then we're going to go back and just make sure that our slides are correct. And then we'll resubmit, um, if there is a change or if not, uh, understand what, what we have here.
I appreciate it. I thought it was actually going to be something that had to do with the numbers of students traditionally who appeal in each of those grade levels and.
We might have an aha moment after, after this, but, um.
All right. Well, aha, I'm going to mute myself right now. So I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. I have a few questions. I'm going to talk really quickly. Um, initially I was concerned about not having honors in science and social studies for sixth grade. Uh, but Ms. Soriano, um, and Mr. Mendez, you have clearly, um, affirmed that having the two honors is probably enough and that we are indeed differentiating, um, in science and social studies. I do want to make sure that those students who have a passion for science and social studies have an opportunity to explore and, uh, to be enriched. And so, um, as we look through our equity lens, and, um, I'm, I'm really pleased to hear that we have a diverse group of students from our assistant principals. But I want to just mention, um, that there is a seminal work out of Columbia University Teachers College, All Students Reaching the Top: Strategies for Closing Achievement Gaps by Dr. Edmund Gordon. And it talks about, um, realizing students' giftedness or realizing students' potential. And one of the, one of the supplementary activities that it talks about is study groups. And this will apply not just to middle school, but also to the high school. And this is based on studies in Japan where students study together for higher level courses. So I'd like us to take a look at that. The MAP assessments, grade five, would you tell us what that's going to look like in a virtual world, um, giving an assessment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, we're going to administer the MAP virtually. Um, teachers will log with, uh, onto Zoom with their classrooms, just like we are here. Um, we are, um, going to have the students log into their math portal, uh, map portal, uh, excuse me. Um, and they will assess. Uh, we do have, uh, software in district which allows us to see if a student is on a map tab or if they deviate to a different tab. So we'll be able to monitor that. Um, and we're going to, um, just remind our parents that it's very important for the student to take the assessment without, um, encouragement or motivation that's external. Uh, that way we can just get a real read for our students. Um, the map also comes with, um, a, uh, in its system, it lets us know whether clicks, kids are just clicking through or if students are taking too much time, right? And the stu- the teacher can monitor that. She can see that or he can see that on his dashboard. So that would let us know, um, you know, how the student is, is either just, you know, quickly, quickly or if they're really, uh, engaged, um, a little red, uh, banner comes up for the teacher to let them know. So we have, um, some software that will assist us in making sure that this is a, a proctored environment, albeit virtually. Uh, will it be perfect? I don't think so, but we're going to do it as best as we can. At the end of the day, what we don't want is another layer of inequity. We don't want, um, students who can't get to the school or who still are not comfortable. We don't want students who can't get to the school or who still are not comfortable coming to the school to be unable to map and then be denied to access to the honors program. So we just want to make sure that everybody has access to the map and that they can take their assessment. We'll monitor it with the technology that we have and then we'll determine eligibility.
Great. I hope that we can get a gifted and talented presentation at some point. I, I think we'd all love to hear what it looks like, K through six. And I, I would also like to get some data at some point about the number of students coming out of fifth grade into Edison and what that looks like, the recommendations going into both the gifted program as well as recommendations for, for honors. And then I just wanted to mention the growth mindset, you know? I know we talk about that at the high school, but probably we should start doing a lot of that in kindergarten, talking about the growth mindset and making sure that we let students know it's okay to fail and really stretching the intelligence and you can get smarter. And I think we'll have more students who are feeling more self-assured and have more confidence and who are willing to make a mistake and know that it's okay. All right, at this point, and I, again, I thank you all for the presentation and I know you're going to hang around because we are about to move into our questions from the public on agenda items only. Ms. Gravteza, if you would do the honors for us, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Miss, miss, I'm sorry, one second, Ms. Gravteza. I apologize, Madam President. Mr. Mendez, I feel reasonably confident that you and I are capable to answer any questions which might come from the public. If any of our invited guests needed to tend to personal matters at home. And if a question did come up that was so content specific that neither you nor I could answer it, we could always circle back. Of course, anyone that wishes to stay on may do so, but you know, I'm very, you know, very comfortable, you know, you know, actually giving you any of the hard questions. So but, but just if anyone needed, I know this has gone on a long time. So if anyone needs to tend to personal business, don't feel free to, to disengage at this point. So thank you, Madam President. Not you, Mr. Rothstein, you have to stay.
Okay, thank you. Yes. So now is the time for public comment. This is question on agenda items only. Using the raise your hand feature located at the bottom of your screen. And if you are one of our call-in patrons, it is star nine. You do not have to wait for anyone to finish speaking before you raise your hand. We encourage that if you do have a question, you could push that button. Now you will be put in a queue. Again, this is for agenda items only. There will be a time a little later for other, other issues other than agenda. So we have Fleece Flit, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello, am I good here?
Yes, yes. If we can have just your name and address for the record, please.
Fleece Flit, fifty-five Bowlin Drive.
Thanks.
Good evening. There has been a lot of focus regarding the elementary school students. However, I have a middle schooler and a high schooler, so I'm going to focus my questions and comments on those school ages. My kids are in cohort B, so my seventh grader has been in school for four days and my high schooler has been in school for two days. Combining cohorts would really be ideal. Each of my kids have only had two to four kids in any of their classes at any given time. I know in the elementary schools, combining cohorts would be a little bit more complicated because their numbers are higher. But nobody addressed the middle schools and the high schools. So just wanted to bring that up. And regarding the Fridays, again, only elementary school was mentioned. So I just want to talk about the high school here. My high school student is in all honors classes. He's getting all the As. However, he's done by five, by ten thirty on Friday mornings. And that's only because he's allowed from nine fifty to ten twenty. He's not waking up at six AM to start doing homework. He's waking up probably eight thirty, eight, eight thirty, like a normal kid. But he is in all honors classes and he's still done by ten thirty. So while I under, and he's in sports, he's doing things like, I understand some kids are in many labs, but you know, this is another perspective. Additionally, there was a mention earlier about the middle schools being five days. Liberty has just gone to asynchronous on alternating Fridays. I just wanted to bring that up because that has not been mentioned. One more thing that I keep mentioning in every board meeting, let's not forget about the kids in the middle. It's been mentioned a few times tonight. So thank you to those of you that did. The ones who are getting the As and Bs but are still struggling socially. They're not making plans. They're not getting together with their friends because I won't allow it. I'm still trying to be as socially conscious as we can in the middle of a pandemic. So we're not having play dates. We're not going out to dinner with friends. We are trying to stay as local as we can. And that's, that's my little spiel. One last thing, regarding the plastic barriers, I've heard that one of the middle schools are already using them. Who purchased those and why aren't they in all the middle schools? For, you know, the two or four days that our kids have been in. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And next we have Elmani Vini. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, this is Elmani Esvani. I'm at one eighty-six Forest Hill Road. Just for clarity, am I able to make questions or comments as it pertains to the honors program? They're just presented?
Uh, yes, that was on the agenda.
Okay, wonderful. Just wanted to double check. All right, just a couple of questions and suggestions. So my first question is, how do you make sure that the honors program is in line with child development stages? And I raise this because the concern would be if the rigor becomes detrimental to where a child is developmentally, especially when you're looking at fifth graders, their age and what they're thinking of. In addition to that, how do we make sure that failure is not seen as punitive, but as a matter of trial and error? We understand the high stakes that honors and even AP courses take place when we are into high school. But how do we make sure that the sense of failure is not seen as punitive and defining for a child? Second, how do we make sure that there's an environment where it's those students that are not gifted and talented or honors still exist in an environment whereas they see it as an open door rather than a ceiling? So that in our middle schools, there's not a feeling of elitism or haves and have nots. Third, and this is a couple of suggestions. I know you talked about guidance counselors being advocates and I'm all for that. But I think we need to be cautious and I'd say, how do we increase the pool of therapists that need to be, be on online to help out when there are mental health challenges that we see with our young people? Because sometimes they need to be able to handle things that may, that may be above what our guidance counselors can or even our guidance counselors' caseloads. Two more points, have you thought about using high school students that are in honors or AP as being recruiters to students in the fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade to encourage them to go into honors? Especially those that may come from the demographic that can be more relatable, even when we're talking about having more kids from lower income come in? Because sometimes they don't want to go in if they don't see a reflection of themselves. And then last but not least, have you thought about as a senior option program utilizing seniors to serve as mentors or even in-class teachers assistants to the students in the middle school as support for those kids or for kids in those honors classes as a way to create a more calm and healthy environment while they're in these rigorous courses? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Julie Bookbinder. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please, and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, Julie Bookbinder, thirty-seven Collar. And thank you, Dr. Cascon and Board for the update tonight on the opening of the honors program. Of course, it leads to more questions. First off, are you preparing and actually submitting a plan now to be approved by the county and state? So that, you know, when you feel conditions are ready, that it will be ready to go. Secondly, do you know whether the county and state are accepting or expecting plans to be submitted? If they're not, is it possible that the plan will sit on someone's desk and hold up? Are possible, you know, further in-person attendance indefinitely? Secondly, at a more granular level with respect to elementary, which I understand is being discussed. It was nice to hear that high school could combine cohorts most likely with the numbers, but with elementary. Just for example, if there's a second grade class at Kelly where cohorts can be combined, but not all the second grade classes there, or maybe all the second grade at Kelly can be combined for their cohorts, but not at St. Cloud, what's going to happen? Will there be any ability to use other spaces at other schools? Also, there is a little confusion to me on the dividers. I felt from a prior meeting that they had been ordered. Now it sounds like they're going to be ordered from a prior caller. It sounds like some are in place. So any clarity there would be appreciated. Finally, overall, this update tonight with respect to elementary on the Fridays and afternoons was tremendously disappointing. What I'm hearing as the elementary parent is that the elementary students, who are the ones who need the most interaction and direction from their teachers, are getting stuck with the least. There must be a way, whether it's the Fridays or the afternoons, there must be a way to solve this issue. You know, having the related arts as hybrid, where maybe the related arts teacher is the one who's virtual and the classroom teacher is in the classroom, that may be one way to do it. The small groups that they have could be done in hybrid, the way that they're doing small groups, even sometimes during the morning instruction. Asynchronous Fridays for elementary school, they just don't work at this point. I, a lot of people are saying this year is a wash and to let it go. But that's not acceptable. That's not acceptable as a parent. It's not acceptable for my child. I don't really think it should be acceptable to anyone. We should keep pushing ahead and try to solve this. We have time by the end of April, if you want to say May first, we have time to do this. So let's shine, do it. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Lauren Weinshank. If you can follow the prompt that'll appear on your screen.
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Cascon. My eight-year-old came down before and said, mommy, are you talking to Dr. Cascon again? So obviously I think I'm starting to get a reputation in my house.
It's Weinshank. I'm sorry. Could we just have your name and address for the record?
Lauren Weinshank, Six Curry Lane, West Orange.
Thanks.
Dr. Cascon, in your own words to an email to me a few weeks ago, you had said if the CDC changed the guidance from six, from three feet to six feet, we could double our capacity overnight. So they have changed the capacity and now there's more issues. While I understand overnight is not a possibility in any realm, as well as I don't expect the entire school district to be back in. I would have hoped at this update, there was more information about combining cohorts, looking at additional spaces in the school. Again, it's what now? We wanted our teachers to have the opportunity to get vaccinated, which they should have gotten that opportunity in the beginning. Now we have that opportunity. High-risk teachers could have gotten vaccinated in January and now all teachers can. But again, there's another barrier. What now? In the beginning, Fridays, the schools were closed for cleaning. Now they don't need to be closed for cleaning, but they need to be closed for scheduling. Again, as a parent, it's just another block, another guidance. My child in elementary school has a half hour of work on Fridays. She used to have two small group instruction, but now since they went back to hybrid, she only has one. I don't know what happened to the other one. I do have her conference tomorrow and I will ask. But again, she's done with her work in a half hour. There's no check-in with the teacher. There's no interaction. Other districts rotated through on Fridays with the cohorts in the elementary schools. And I, I just can't accept that it has to be a scheduling issue. While children who have additional services deserve every second of those services, my child deserves time in school with her teachers and with her peers, which brings me to the other point. My children are your average student. My son is getting straight As in honors classes as well. But so he doesn't have the opportunity to go back into class because he's doing okay. But what's my argument to say that he needs it? His emotion, you know, his emotional needs are being, you know, defeated as well. It's just difficult to constantly hear that only certain kids get that opportunity to come in, whether they should have that opportunity, but other children do as well. At this point, it just seems that our children are pawns in some sort of political game. I'm not sure who's being protected. I understand the state is not giving the guidance I've been calling as well. But it's very hard to see other towns move forward, especially in Essex County, especially three minutes down the road when our MD advisor is the same as those towns. And I don't understand the difference. They have fifteen to eighteen children per classroom. Why can't we? I just, you know, I've been fighting this. I believe in it. I've read all of the CDC guidance and it constantly just seems like there's another roadblock and another roadblock. And I'm really just hoping that eventually we get to the end of this because I just don't want my children to really, you know, have these repercussions, which I feel that they're going to have for a very long time. And I do thank you for taking the time for these meetings, listening to us and always responding to our emails. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rachel Keen. If you can give us your name and address for the record and follow the prompt on the screen.
Hi, Rachel Keen, twenty-two Schmidt Road. Thank you for taking my call and I just had a few questions regarding the fall. There was a survey sent out asking parents if they would remain virtual in the fall or they would want their children to attend five days a week. So I was wondering, do we have a sense that we have a good number of parents who want to stay virtual in the fall? Or do we think that we will not need to have a virtual option? If we do need to have a virtual option and we are cutting twenty teachers, I think it was twenty in the last meeting, how are we going to staff the virtual option? I, regarding the barriers, the, the new CDC guidance, which was released on Friday, states that we no longer need to have barriers of any kind. So maybe we can just wait on purchasing those since it's so expensive, bad for the environment and may not really be scientifically necessary in order to mitigate infection spread. Today, Governor Murphy said that they are going to discuss on Wednesday during their press briefing. They said they're still digesting the CDC recommendation. So maybe on Wednesday, they'll announce that they're going to line the state recommendations up with what the CDC recommends. I, I wanted to ask why we would need to wait to go to moderate or low levels of community spread to combine elementary school cohorts? Since the CDC recommendations say that elementary school students can go to three feet distance at all levels of community spread. Can we plan for this in the meantime as the state develops its guidance? My last question is how far apart do elementary school students sit normally? I'm hearing that even at three feet, we can't combine elementary school cohorts. Three feet is a very short distance and elementary school students are pretty small. So I don't, I don't really understand how it would be difficult in the classrooms to combine their cohorts. Lastly, I just want to say that we should have confidence in the CDC guidance. It's based on almost twenty studies from all over the world and from America. And I don't think that we should consider it a, an action of, you know, jamming kids into a classroom. Really, the guidance focuses on layered mitigation, including ventilation and a hundred percent mask compliance. So I think that we should feel confident and safe combining young children into larger cohorts for more in-person learning. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm going to make one last call for anyone who would like to speak on agenda items only using the raise your hand function located at the bottom of your screen. And if you're one of our call-in attendees, it is star nine. Okay, thank you, Dory Mailman. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, Dory Mailman, twenty-seven Bayowski Road. My question is about, in addition to everything else everyone else asked here. Someone mentioned earlier that, you know, lunch is a problem. And, you know, like having kids eat school, eat lunch in school is a big problem. And I'm just curious, as Dr. Cascon has raised the issue many times, that it's not just the CDC guidelines that he has to go by, but the state guidelines. We have indoor dining that is open now. So I want to try and understand how it's okay for there to be indoor dining and people eating in restaurants, but the kids are not allowed to eat inside school.
Is that all?
Yeah, that's all. Sorry.
Thank you. No problem. Thank you. Okay, next we have Laura. I think I mispronounce your name every time and I'm not going to try. If you can give us your name and address for the record.
It's Laura Nessner.
Nessner, okay.
And 504 Eagle Rock Avenue. Don't worry, I, I'm used to it by now. So I just wanted to, first of all, I heard Ms. Dendez saying about the Fridays and what it, she believes it to look like. I would challenge her to go and see what it actually looks like. Because just like a, a previous speaker, my daughter has a half-hour morning meeting, which includes the reading buddies, which my daughter loves. So I'm all for the reading buddies. But it's a half-hour morning meeting. And then she basically waits until her work is posted, probably about a half hour. And then she's done with that in a half an hour. She's one of the lucky ones that gets enrichment class in the afternoon on Fridays. So she does get an extra half hour in the afternoon. But that's it. There's, she's, if a half an hour of work is done on Friday, that, that's a lot. And that's total, not for each subject area. And like others said, I, I would also like to challenge us to come up with solutions instead of excuses. I hear a lot of excuses about why we can't do things. There are districts in the area that do, that have moved to four days a week. And they have come up with, with ways to, to do it. I don't know why we can't. I know that Montville is a much smaller district, but they have been doing less than six feet all year long. How, now that the CD guidance says that we can, I'm also one of those people that received an email saying that once the CDC guidance changed, we could double capacity overnight. So I would challenge us to come up with solutions instead of coming up with the reasons why we can't now. And what are we going to do for all of these kids that are bored? Who are reading on Epic while their teachers are teaching virtually? But I can't be mad at her because she answers the questions right when she gets called on. So what are we going to do to challenge those students right now? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just want to remind everyone that there is only one time you're allowed to speak. So if you've already gone in this section, we have to ask you to lower your hand and then you can speak again at the next time. But we don't duplicate the people we've already heard. Katie, no last name, if you can give us your name and address for the record and.
Hi, yes, Katie Whistick, 49 Manger Road. So I just have, I'm going to start out with the honors program. So one question about the, I'm sorry, about the MAP assessment that's going to be given virtually. And I'm wondering how that will affect a student that may have a 504 or an IP and how those are going to be addressed virtually. I will say that overall, I'm a little bit disheartened. Trying to be open-minded, but disheartened that the science and social studies opportunity is being removed for an incoming sixth grader, as those were the two areas that my child was most looking forward to. So disheartened that they have been removed. You know, want to remain optimistic, but it's a little challenging. Only based on the fact and experiences this year of programs that were added that I don't think were thoroughly thought through. I'm referring to the enrichment program that was done this year that ended up not really being an enrichment program. I think it was kind of thrown together and I'm concerned that this decision in terms of getting rid of the science and social studies going to sixth grade is kind of lined up the same way. And then in terms of reopening our schools more, you know, I'm not going to compare us to another district. We are our own district. My question is, and I hate to do on the Friday topic again. You know, all of these services are offered on Fridays for students that need basic skills, that need SL enrichment, who need small classwork. In terms of overall, what percentage of the students in the district is that? And I mean, the fact that we're holding Fridays just for whatever percentage that is. It seems like we're holding Fridays open only for a small percentage, where the average kids are losing out on that opportunity. You know, we keep hearing about the small group work. My child does one small group work, fifteen minutes every week. That's it. The rest is regular class. I'm very pleased with the work that my son has been giving during class periods or his teachers. He's doing a fabulous job, but we keep saying we need to save Fridays for small group work and enrichment and all this. But I just want to really know what percentage of students that is really affecting and why we're holding all of Fridays for the, you know, for a small percentage instead of, you know, the rest of the district. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Amanda Olvera. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Amanda Olvera. I'm at 23 Crystal Ave. I just wanted to bring up, you know, Fridays have been mentioned numerous times. But I think there's also a concern with the afternoons during the week as well. You know, my, my son's in fourth grade and he, he is part of Cohort B, so he does go into the building, you know, twice a week. But in the afternoons, he has one thirty-minute session on Monday for PE and two thirty-minute sessions on Thursday afternoon for his specials. And that's it. You know, the, the rest of the time, you know, he's already done with his work and he, he's really not doing anything. So I think if we're going to look at possibly revamping a Friday because of the lack of teacher interaction, I think we need to look at the week as well because, you know, there's concern that there just isn't enough work happening and, and not a whole lot of teacher interaction, you know, for the average student. Yeah, I, I think that's it. I didn't want necessarily to belabor on that any further. But I just want to make sure that we're taking a look at the whole curriculum and not just focusing on Fridays. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next we have Lauren Price Steierman. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Sure. Lauren Price Steierman, I'm calling from, where am I? So my name, that's my name. I live at sixty-two O'Connor Circle. I have a sixth grader at Edison. And to say that I'm sad that he's missing this whole year actually in school is an understatement. But I did want to thank everybody for spending so much time on, on this crazy year. And to the Edison staff for what they are doing. I'm also going to address Fridays a little bit. I understand that there's special needs students who, and there's services that they need. But I'm trying to understand what happens on Monday through Thursday at the end of the instructional day versus the end of the school day. So, because there's also those hours. So in that case, why can't more be done on Fridays? Again, I'm talking about a student, my son, who is in some honors classes, who is a good student. Is he in the gifted program? No, he's not. But he's not a special needs student either. And again, we're in that middle of the road where these children seem to be getting lost. And I just think that there's a time that they, there's time for them to be, to be added. And again, I appreciate that every, everything that everybody is doing, but I just, I see this Friday as a whole. And I do would like to know what, what happens between the end of the instructional day and the end of the actual school day. So thank you again for everyone who's always answered my questions when I email and thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. Rachel, I see that you have reached your hand again. Okay, okay, no problem. I think that might have just been an accident. Again, so we had the last call. Okay, Carla Vale. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Carla Vale, 37 Beltar Road. So I'm just gonna share some of the parents' concerns with regard to every time we get some sort of new guidance or information from the individuals that are supposed to be guiding us, there's always a reason or an excuse or something else that needs to be addressed before moving forward. Now, outside of the school community, there had been several talks about the CDC changing their guidance. So this was no surprise to parents when this information came out. So I'm pretty certain it was absolutely no surprise to the school community either. So if we're going to continue to just say that, you know, there's another barrier, there's something else, then the parents deserve full transparency at this point, instead of just, you know, throwing out that the Cali score is too high or, you know, community spread is too high. I think we need to start getting a little bit more transparency as to what data is actually being reviewed locally by our Department of Health, how this information is being translated or interpreted by Dr. Kascón and others on the board that is leading to these decisions being made. We are a year, I think we're over a year now, into this. We have learned a lot. We have come a long way. And I think if we continue to say that there are barriers, we're not going to open up. And this is taking away from the constitutional rights of our children. Our children are falling behind in every aspect. I am a public service worker. I work with children in communities that you guys don't really want to know about. And I see it. And I think the biggest fear for any parent right now is that we really do know that the repercussions of what is happening right now to our children are going to be seen later on down the road. And we should really be doing everything possible to make this situation better, but we keep making excuses. So Dr. Kascón, I am going to follow up with you via email regarding my concerns. But at this point, I think myself and other parents do need a little bit more transparency as to the decisions that are being made on behalf of our children. Because that is who we serve, is the, our students, our children. Thank you so much, guys, and have a good night.
Okay, thank you. And final, final call for anyone who would like to speak on agenda items, using the raise your hand button at the bottom of your screen. And no one else is raising their hands.
Thank you, Ms. Gravteza, and thank you to our public with some very interesting and.
Mr. Skals, can you, no, you have the, you've moved your mic up.
Sorry. Okay. So thank you, Ms. Gravteza. And I was thanking the members of the public who hung in there with us this evening for your questions. And as usual, I'm going to ask Dr. Kascón to begin to respond.
Oh, but now you're muted, Dr. Kascón.
Thank you, Ms. Gravteza, and thank you, Madam President. I will certainly do my best on this hour fifteen of a day. A lot of questions. I'll do my best to answer them. Some tough questions, some tough assertions. You know, about the manner in which I'm making decisions, but I will do my best to provide some clarity. So just, just kind of giving some data, you know, we, we, we surveyed and certainly not, you know, not discounting the perspectives, certainly appreciate and respect the perspectives of, of the parents who've, who've come to speak tonight. But I do also think it's important to, you know, to, to refer to some of the data that we've collected through some of the surveys that we've administered. Now granted, you know, we have not surveyed the, the parents since about December. And so Ms. Mendez, just to kind of note to selves that I think it might be worthwhile to administer another survey at this time. Because, you know, we were, we were, we were, we gained some interesting insights relative to, to surveys, which we administered to the secondary parents. And I'm starting with secondary because Ms. Flitz's comments were, were, were geared primarily towards middle school and high school. And just as an example of, you know, of, of one question, I'm not going to go through, through all of them. But a question was, what is your child's overall attitude about remote learning? And out of a proxy, we had seven hundred two responses to that survey. We had thriving, we had two hundred two agreed, a hundred eight strongly agreed, ninety-nine were neutral, thirty-two disagreed, and, and only eight of that seven hundred two secondary responses were a strong, strong disagreement. Just want to kind of go, there's some more questions specific to the, the, the adequacy of the day. I just want to get to that question. If you'll just bear with me. Let's bear with me one moment as I work through this. So question was characterize your child's experience with the virtual school schedule. And again, this was six through, six through twelve, four hundred forty-nine of the respondents responded that it was just right. There was just right time to engage in classes, take breaks, complete classwork and homework. Forty-eight actually replied that the screen time was excessive. Seventy-nine responded that it was a light day, lessons are short, classwork and homework combined or completed by noon. And a hundred twenty-six actually responded that it was a packed day and lessons are long, classwork and homework combined take more than a, a day to complete. You know, so that was, that was illuminating in terms of, of how our parents felt about at least those that responded. And there were a little over seven hundred that responded. Again, I do think, you know, two more months into this, it would be worthwhile to, two or three more months into it, worthwhile to understand where secondary parents are now. But that, that data was, was reassuring. Somewhat similarly, on the elementary level, we administered a survey in December. Out of seventeen hundred thirteen responses, sixty-five point nine, you know, what is your experience with the virtual school schedule? Sixty-five, sixty-five point nine percent indicated they felt it was just right. There was just right time to engage in classes, take breaks. Ten point eight thought it was packed day and lessons are too long. And we did have about twenty-three point three percent that thought it was a light day. And when we disaggregated that data, we found that, that many of those parents were in the kindergarten, you know, the primary grades. It, it, it's not to say that, you know, that, that twenty-three point three percent is not valuable. But I, I just present this data as just a counter perspective to illustrate that there are ample individuals, ample parents, ample students who, who are, who are finding the experience to be positive. That being said about Fridays, and I'd like to address that because I know that came out, that came up on multiple occasions. I, I do think that the message has been received and, and I, and I do want to take another bite at that apple to understand if there are ways we can expand upon it. I think it definitely requires some follow-up evaluation to understand why it appears that there's a disconnect between what the model theoretically is supposed to be doing and in some cases what the experiences are. I'm not sure how if we're assigning an asynchronous lesson in four core content areas, which is what the model provides, how students are finished in a half an hour. That just simply should not be happening regardless of how quickly the students are going through the work if we are giving an asynchronous lesson in four core content areas. I, I will tell you that, you know, that while I respect what the parents are saying about Fridays, I can tell you that, you know, after a, a previous meeting, you know, I came back to the table and Ms. Mendez can vouch for this. And I was very fired up about Fridays and very much interested in moving to this kind of alternating three and two-day cohort. And I presented that. I said, this is really the direction I want to move. And, you know, I was presented with perspective from principals who were not being obstructionist. They were not being intentionally contrary, but they were presenting me with legitimate concerns about what that would do to the overall schedule. And I think it is important, you know, we can minimize that. Or we can recognize that it is a, a real important piece of what we're presently doing and how our model was built and how our model was. And how our model was built, understanding that those Fridays were going to be these asynchronous days because of the deep cleaning. Which we now understand we can most likely work around. But it's only through the experience of six or seven months of the school year that we've learned that, but yet the model remains built around that. That being said, I, I will charge the team with understanding if there are stones that we have left unturned. And ways in which we can expand upon that uh on Fridays. Uh, but we, we do stand behind as the educational professionals, as the people responsible for making these decisions. We do stand behind the importance of that time and, and really the desire to not want to push that into the instructional days. And, and pull time away from those, those instructional classes. Um, you know, uh, you know, this premise of, you know, kind of forgetting about the students in the middle, and certainly. Um, you know, e- every, every, every child's experience is different and um. And, and, and I've said this a number of times in my emails to parents is, you know, I said, even as, as, you know, I'm engaging and. You know, i- in dialogue with parents about kind of these high-level conversations about the model, I've said. And some parents may even recognize this language from my emails, I've said, I'm as interested in understanding about your child. W- w- you know, what is it about this particular, the model or the time or whatever it may be? Um, that is making it difficult for your child to meet with success? Is your, your, your supposition that your child or your observation even that your child is. Struggling or is falling behind, is that, is that actually the case from an academic standpoint? Is that what the academic, academic data is showing, is that what the teachers are observing? And certainly if that is the case, and we are not putting in place a robust plan to try and bridge that gap, even within some of the limitations of our model. Well, then that needs to change, um, but I, I think, and we haven't had an opportunity to really present. Um, holistically about what we're doing to i- identify where students are, addressing learning loss, building summer programming. Um, to, to understand kids that are not meeting with success now, what do we need to do to, to help them make su- meet success? We will be doing that shortly, but I, I think this idea that we're, we're taking our eye off the ball. And that, and that the quality of our school district and the quality of our programs is sort of the zero-sum game where. If we're not in five days a week, then we're, then, then our quality is this and our caliber is this and the services we're delivering are this. To me, I think that that's, I, I think there's, there's a certain degree of unfairness to that, and it's sort of. It, it devalues on some level and minimizes all, all the things that are happening and all the success that kids are meeting with. But certainly if your child is experiencing difficulties, then, then charge us, not necessarily saying, well, because my child, child's struggling. We need to make this global change to what we're doing, but my child's struggling. What, what is the school, what is the teacher, what is the guidance counselor doing to more effectively address um these difficulties that my child's encountering? Um, in terms of the barriers, um, you know, and I, and I, I can't recall what, what verb tense I used, if it was in the past tense. Or whether it was in the future tense, um, I definitely recall indicating that we were going to be purchasing them. Um, I gave pause, quite frankly, after I had received. Um, the number of barriers that we were gonna need, which is north of six thousand barriers. At thirty-five dollars a piece of the ones that were originally shared with me, I did not feel that that was a responsible use of taxpayer funds because it would have. Do the math on it, um, would have been um, close to two hundred thousand dollars, um, if not more. Uh, to purchase that number of barriers, so I went to research additional ones that were at a, a lower price point. So, um, I don't know, um, uh, Mr. Mendez, I don't know if you wanna, if you want, uh, Mr. Viney, um, had some interesting thoughts. Um, about the, the honors program, I don't know if you wanted to maybe handle those?
Um, well, with regard to how our honors program is in line with child development stages. Um, I, I, I think that's a part of what we're doing, our research and what we're thinking about with those transitions to. Um, middle school and how many um courses we're expecting students to take, um, et cetera. Um, in, in consideration of our child's development, our children's developmental stages. Um, we're thinking about the standards in terms of academic readiness, um, and where they are uh there. Uh, yes, we do believe that there are certain levels of rigor and or uh pressures that we can put on students that really go contra to. Um, what they're ready for, um, and we want to make sure that as we're engaging students that they're choosing. Uh, their honest courses, uh, because they want to be there, because they believe they can be there, because they have the task commitment. Because they're ready for that type of coursework, um, and so that they can succeed. Um, we agree, failure not as punitive for defining a child, absolutely, right? And so then uh reworking some of those uh misconceptions around, if you're not in honors, that equates to something negative, not at all, right? Um, all of our courses are, are, are meant to uh challenge our students, to uh help move them toward academic uh success. Uh, as they uh go to high school, uh, et cetera, and prepare for their uh careers. Um, but definitely protecting that, uh, Mr. Viney is, is critical, and so then we'll. Continue to take these points that you've mentioned here to our teams and, 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 and um be very deliberate about making them. A continuous talking points, um, with regard to uh gifted and honors uh not being seen as a ceiling. Uh, rather a door, I think that that's what um Mr. Klemp was uh alluding to or intimating when he and Mr. Hush. Uh, were discussing, uh, when students are at the middle school, uh, if a teacher notices, if a student says, I want to try honors, right? If, if a teacher says, you know, the student um needs to uh be considered here for this program. Um, we would love to move toward that end where students are advocating for self, where we can eventually move away from all types of criteria. And the students can say, I'd like to be in this program, this is why I believe I'm a good fit. Um, these are the things that I have in my, in my product, in my student work, in my own task commitment that I believe make me. A good fit and, and, and make it about the student advocating for self, teaching them. Um, versus necessarily parent, right? It, it should be the student saying, I want to be an honor student, this is what I believe I come. Um, to my academic plate with, right, and this is where I want to um engage um my, 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 um, my effort. Um, and then uh allowing that student opportunity to do that and then watching that student thrive in that environment. Um, I've been in open environments um like that and um, we've seen nothing but positive and success, right? When we allow the students to advocate for self and we remove criteria, we see them rise to the challenge because it's on their, on their timing, right? With their, with their choosing for self. Um, agreed with guidance as advocates versus therapists, um, I know, um, our director of student uh special services. And our director of school counseling, um, they're both uh having those discussions, I've just had that. Um, with our director of school counseling this week, the, the need for therapists, right? The need for people trained in um these areas, psychologists, more psychologists on staff. Um, w- we know the uh budget cuts that are here and we also know our priorities, sometimes they compete, but. Um, we're confident that we'll get them in order, right? And so, um, as we're having these discussions around um therapists and professionals that are really. Um, uh licensed to deal with some of the crisis that we're seeing and some of the um, the needs of our students. Uh, uh, those conversations are taking place. With regards to have we thought about using students in high school as recruiter recruiters, uh. Uh, currently, our high school students attend our Edison STEM Day, so they do come down and they participate with our students there. Our second-year IMS students speak with our eighth graders, so we do have instances where our high school students. Um, do engage with our middle school students or younger students, um, to encourage them, to motivate them. Uh, inspire them to enter into and to prepare for these advanced programs, we could certainly do more. And so then, um, we've um taken note of your suggestion and we will bring it back to the team to say how um. How, how more so can we engage our high school students, our leaders, right, uh, with our younger students? Uh, so that they can uh pave the way and continue to model.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez. Okay, um, moving along here, um, so it relates to this, Mr. Bookbinder's comments, um, questions. Yes, I mean, I, you know, I'm, I'm prepared to, to email the county superintendent. I don't even know if it necessarily needs to be an official, you know, submission of a, you know, of a multi-page document, rather just basically a, an addendum to the plan. Um, and understand the degree to which that'll even be considered. Um, no, I, I, I don't believe that, 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 and amazingly so, when, when, when we were. It, it's become the Wild West out there, it's become the Wild West. Um, and, and I, I would agree on a, a level that there's, there's a political game being played, but not by me. There's been a political game being played with this since it started, okay? And it's, and it's superintendents and communities that are caught in the middle of it, but it's the Wild West. Where, what started out as you needed to submit a plan and detail and need to be approved by the county superintendent, need to be approved by the NJ Department. Now, folks, you're just going and they're just going, they're just going and doing their own thing without any approval from the state. Um, so whether or not they'll even consider their request, if they're silent on it. Well, then I, I guess I'll come back to the board and say, well, we haven't gotten any, um, you know, and, and any response from the state or the county. We'll go to our local Department of Health or district physician and say, um, you know, are you, are you comfortable with us doing it this point in time? Do you feel from a public health standpoint, it makes sense? Um, I think, you know, and, and I appreciate one, one of the comments where, you know, we're gonna com- compare us to other communities, and I appreciate that because. You know, because there are all a host of different thing, there are a host of things that are different about, about communities, namely, uh, the degree to which the. Um, the virus and the pandemic has impacted them, um, and is continuing to impact them. Um, and I think that that's very relevant. Um, I would also suggest, um, that if you look carefully at some of the correspondences that have been put out. Not necessarily by the one district to which people are referring, but to other districts uh nearby. Um, they are putting forth these plans as tentatives, they are not saying that this is definitively happening. They're saying it's happening predicated on X, Y, and Z. Um, but I agree that the, you know, the CDC guidelines um do not, um. Do not call for any kind of consideration of the public health environment. You know, and the public health situation enclosing the social distance on the elementary level, so that has to be taken into consideration to our submissions to the county. Um, I, you know, I've heard this mention of the idea of utilizing spaces in other schools, a- and I'm not exactly sure. I'm not exactly sure what that means, um, you know, we, we, we don't, we don't really, it's not as if we have. Extensive spaces um in, in other schools, um, you know. You know, busing kids to different schools, you know, we're talking about bringing kids from different schools and different cohorts into other schools. I, I just, I, I would love for, for, you know, for someone who's, who's um presented that or suggested that to, to email me and, and provide with me a little bit. You know, if you have um some additional idea on how that would assist, because I'm, I'm not really seeing it, even if the space has existed. Um, I'm not exactly sure how that would, how that would reverberate to the situation, but I'm, I'm open to ideas if anyone has them. Um, and you're right, I mean, if we, you know, you know, I, I, I would suggest that if we, if by um quirk of cohort, we're able to combine cohorts and. You completely in one place and not in another, um, how parents in the school where we're not able to combine it, we feel about the fact that we're doing it in another school or another class even within a school. I'm not sure that that's something that I could stand behind as the superintendent and not necessarily in any particular order. Um, and you know, perhaps, um, I, I, it sounds very out of character. For me, operating in this environment to, to, to say anything would happen overnight, but maybe I was speaking glibly or colloquially because. Nothing can happen overnight with the way we're operating, just by virtue of the changes and the adjustments that need to be made. And you're right in that I said it could double the occupancy. But that doesn't mean that we necessarily can have all the kids in a class in a classroom at one given time, yes. I mean, if we have five kids in a classroom presently, we can have ten, if we have six, we can have twelve. Um, if we have nine, can we double that to eighteen? Well, that depends upon whether or not the, the room can accommodate that with three feet. Uh, perhaps I should have been a little bit more clear in my qualification on that, that it is based upon the size of the room. Um, in terms of how far apart students typically sit, arms length a- at, at most. Um, because students can, can typically, you know, touch the student that's sitting next to them, so it's between eighteen inches and two feet at most. In some classes and some of our smaller classrooms at Washington School and Hazel School, when you add in desks and other materials. And you talk about twenty-two, twenty-three kids, it is very tight in those rooms typically. Um, it's not near three feet uh distance from, from the students in the class. Um, right, so I mean, should, should we have confidence in the CDC guidelines? Um, well, um, I would think so, um, and as I mentioned in my opening report, I think that. Notwithstanding the fact that the state has not aligned, though it sounds like it's promising that they might. I do believe that this now gives us the confidence to be able to kind of move forward and make this recommendation to begin these conversations. Um, again, you know, uh, Fridays, um, this is something that we can look at and see if there are any stones that we had left unturned. You know, against students, students who are, who are bored, like if you're, if your child is bored. Um, you know, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's any different than, you know, if you, if your child, for whatever reason, is, is, is disaffected in school. Uh, in brick and mortar and is not meeting with success in school is, is like, my child's, you know, my child's not being challenged. Okay, well, the onus on us, and I, I said this kind of in the outset of this is, is um our obligation to provide. Um, thorough and efficient education and to, and to, and to give your child what they need academically. Does not change because we're only in school two half-days a week, that remains. And we fully expect that if we're not meeting the grade on that, and I would argue if, if there haven't, if there hasn't been outreach on the classroom level with the teacher. Um, then, you know, that's absolutely something that should happen. And, um, and, and we need to do what's necessary to, if your child is bored, to, to, to help them not be bored. Um, Mr. Mendez, I don't know if you wanted to, um, you wanted to answer the question about the MAP assessment and how that will affect a student that has a five oh four IP?
We would honor five oh four and IEP, um, and so whatever those um, uh stipulations are, we would. Um, consider those as we're building out our MAP schedule.
Okay, um, as far as the, um, you know, I just want to hit that Fridays again, what percentage of the students are serviced on Fridays? And look, I, I, you know, I definitely understand that perspective, which is like, hey, you know, my child doesn't necessarily fit into one of those categories, so. That's inequitable, and, and there's, there's some validity to that perspective, I, I, I can't deny that. But I would tell you that when you look at um ESL, BSI, gifted and talented, special education. And I, I can't give you a percentage now, and I'm, I'm not sure how we would, you know, we, we'd probably be able to come up with a thumbnail of that. Um, but it's a pretty large percentage of our student body, um, you know, that's, that's getting those services on Fridays. Um, you know, but I don't, I, I, I don't have that percentage, and I also don't, don't, I, I, I definitely am not minimizing. That perspective because I think it's a fair perspective, and I do think it's one that we need to sharpen our pencil and understand. You know, how, you know, for students that fall into that category where they're not in one of those groups, you know, what are we doing for them presently? And do we have best practices, right? Because there's, there's difference in experience from classroom to classroom, do we have teachers who are, who are really. Really exemplary in this fashion, and can we replicate that, can we make that kind of a standard district-wide expectation? I do think that these are fair questions to answer and questions which I think Mr. Mendez can explore further. Um, with the principals and with the curriculum team, um, you, you know, as, as far as the, um. You know, I don't want, it's late and, you know, I don't want, I want to get to all the, these questions, and I don't want to spend too much time. Uh, pontificating about honors and gifted and talented, um, but, but I do think, I do think we're looking.
Dr. Kesscon?
Oh.
I'm sorry, oh, no, you're back, hello?
I disappeared?
For like, it was weird, it was, you're back now.
I disappeared, I disappeared?
He did, oh, your voice did.
Okay, uh, sorry about that, technical difficulties, um, so. Um, I, I think we're looking at it through a different lens, and I think it, I think it, 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 the. The impetus for that amongst other things is arguably the research of Howard Gardner at Harvard University and multiple intelligences. And I think that it, 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 it opened up a, a, a much different conception of what, of what talent, of what intelligence really is. And that intelligence was not just the ability to be able to take a test really well or to be able to do math problems really well. It wasn't necessarily about just simply pure cognitive um ability, but that talent and, and giftedness. It manifests itself in many different ways. I think the other piece as well is with the increasing rigor of the regular, regular education classroom. I think you saw that ushered in with the next generation science standards, which were mentioned, I think you saw it ushered in with the core, the, the core, um, uh, the common core. Which really pushed a level of rigor and expectation down, and, and rightfully so, it said, listen, this type of rigor should not be. Reserved just for honor students, and so. And, and, and an additional piece was when you see some of these multifaceted, multidisciplinary, engaging projects that typically were just reserved for gifted and talented. Said to ourselves, why the heck aren't we doing this in the regular education classroom? So it really has raised the question of what is the purpose of an honor section? What is the purpose of G and T? And when you hold that side by side with everything we know about tracking and the fact that it's not particularly good for kids. Though we can agree that at a certain point in time, it becomes necessary for a variety of reasons. Most of them sort of institutional and conventional, not necessarily in the best interest of kids. When we talk about the fact that heterogenizing classes in the research shows a lot of positive effects on students in. Students modeling for other students, you heard our math supervisor talk about plugging high flyers students into other groups and modeling and teaching kids, right? So it really has raised questions, really kind of soul searching, big philosophical questions about honors. And it really has charged us to ensure that whether a student is in honors or not. That they are being challenged, that they are being engaged, and that that level of rigor in the regular education, regular education cloud, that regular level class is there. So I would just suggest that, and I think you heard that in the presentation. Is that whether a student's in honors or not, there's pathways to honors and they can ensure that they're getting a rigorous experience. In and and quite frankly, and I'm just going to speak honestly about it, I think sixth grade is very early. I think sixth grade is very early to be pigeonholing kids. That's just my philosophy, I believe that. And I think particularly when we're putting all of our sixth graders into one building. And all of a sudden, right off the bat in sixth grade, we're stratifying them into levels. I don't think it's great. I philosophically, I don't think it's great, I think there's plenty of time for kids to be siphoned into different tracks. Ultimately, because it's necessary. I think we need to give them more time to evolve as learners and just the sixth grade. So that's just some perspective there, I'm going to continue moving along here. Hang on a second here, okay. We had our map question here. This was an interesting question, and and I would present this to Ms. Ms. Mendez here. What is happening between the end of the instructional day and the end of the school day? Now, that's coming from Ms. Price Stearman. And that's for sixth grade, I mean, I I feel like I'm more equipped to answer that question on the elementary level, and I think you sort of did, Mr. Mendez, earlier in the evening. Sixth grade. Second half of the day, can you?
I'm going to check.
Your audio is off unless I'm.
Is it on now?
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, that was me.
All right, I'm I'm going to check with Mr. Fitzgerald to see what his new schedule is, I know that there was a modification made, I just don't recall it right now. So I'm going to check with him and then I'll get back to you.
Yeah, because my understanding is is that virtual schedule falls a bit more of like a kind of an orthodox progression, like they meet with all periods on a daily basis, right?
Yes.
And then when that concludes, and I think it concludes.
Have to look it up.
Yeah, okay, why don't you look, you want to look it up and I'll I'll keep. Okay. Right, so. You know, relative to Ms. Ms. Vales. You know, comments. You know, I'm certainly dismayed to. You know, to to, you know, to hear that, you know, that parents feel that, you know, that I'm not being transparent. I I mean, I I acknowledge the fact that. That there's a, there are constantly shifting sands of of public health guidance. You know, and you know, you know, I, along with other superintendents, you know, in the absence of 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 clear guidance. You know, continue to try and navigate this to the best of our ability. You know, I feel that I've, you know, I've I've attempted to, you know, to update the community on my thought process. I mean, in terms of what criteria are being used, we were using local criteria. And I think what we learned through that process was that when we first suggested this idea of a local positivity rate. It seemed like a, you know, a valid and reliable metric to use. And then I think what we learned and 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 aside from the fact that there were question marks as to the. The correctness of the way it was being calculated, and I'm not even going to, you know, go there. But just in terms of the of the usefulness of that metric. When considering the limitations of the fact that it really only relates to people who were tested. You know, over the course of the last 14 days, it is not necessarily a true indication of the level of risk in the community as a result of that. And so we've really simplified it, and we've gone to a metric that is coming to us from the State Department of Health. It's reliable, it's valid, it's based upon a large data set. And this both the CDC and the State Department of Health guidelines are aligned to it specifically in that verbiage. In terms of that Cali index and the regional risk level. So that's why we've kind of simplified it and used that, but at the same time. Kind of kind of corroborated that with, okay, so this is what it says, but, you know, talk to our district physician, talk to the Department of Health. What are you seeing locally on the ground? In other words, the regional index says, hi. Are are you are you seeing cases that would lead you to believe that West Orange is aligned with that high? Or, you know, maybe we're doing slightly better than the region or slightly worse than the region. And so it's becomes more of kind of a qualitative engagement with the local Department of Health as opposed to using a metric on the local level. Because I think through experience, we learned that it was not necessarily a reliable, you know, indication of the of the local risk. I, you know, I mean, I think that. I I would ask the, I would suggest two things, and just for the for the public's consideration, folks who spoke tonight. You know, one is is that. You know, I can say publicly that I I am, I I'm certainly not. You know, acting below board for for ulterior motives. I'm simply trying to find a way to balance the perspectives and the needs and the wants. Of of a very, of a community with very diverse thought. In a way that is not only safe, but is also not going to tear this community apart in the process. And to find a way forward that we can, that we can build consensus around, and when the dust settles. Yes, the community still has confidence in me as the superintendent, and we can still move forward and work together as a community. And secondly, is I I would ask, even as much as there's a. An interest and a desire to see expanded time. I I would really just ask for folks to to just reconsider this. This, this, this kind of framing of, again, of of our caliber of a school district, of the quality of what we're doing. As simply this just zero sum game of it's either, if we're if we're not in five days a week, then we are X. And if we are, we're Y. I I just think that that's, I would just ask people to rethink that. And finally, just in in closing. You actually, Mr. Mendez, before I close, did you have some insight on that question?
I do, so sixth grade goes from eight, 10 until 1:00 PM. There's a one hour lunch, which brings us to 2:00 PM, and then there's an hour and 23 minutes left in the instructional day, and that's for office hours and small group instruction. So it's not like elementary where we let out a little earlier. They do go through till 1:00 PM, and then there is that that lunch period, and then the hour and 20 minutes for office hours and small group. On Fridays, however, they do have all seven periods of instruction asynchronously.
Mr. Mendez, I I just, just when you said that, and I really want to want you to make a note of this. I I think we really need to be ensuring that we're getting the most. That we're really leveraging that office hour and that small group instruction time, and and maybe we are, maybe that's a, maybe that's something that that building principals and. Supervisors are reviewing in their review of lesson plans. But I think in whether it's just ensuring that every student has access to a small group session at least once a week. I think we need to be more deliberate in how we're using that time. That's just, you know, so I would just ask you to follow up and understand the degree to which we're doing that, because I think that's really important. And just as a final point, you know, and I just to share a personal note with you. Because I, something a parent said, just it resonated me, resonated with me as a superintendent, but also resonated with me as a parent of three public school children. You know, this idea of, you know, the, what is the impact of, you know, what what's potentially going to be the long term impact of this? You know, down the road. Now, I have three, three daughters, two of them are in high school, one's in middle school. Two of them have opted to be virtual, one of them's in hybrid, they are in now four half days a week. They were previously in two half days a week. And, you know, all I can say is is that, you know, I really. Just again, personally, I I really just try and and. And invest as much, and I know you are as well. Invest as much as I can in, you know, in just being there for them, being engaged with them, supporting them, not only academically, but also socially, emotionally. And and I would just, I would just say to parents, you know, have faith in the fact that. That engagement and and that time you're spending with your kids and your presence in their lives is tremendously valuable to that. And I would argue is a great preventative factor in in in, you know, in ensuring that this. Nightmare that we're living through together does not have the kind of long term effects that we we fear. That we we play a huge and important part as parents in in mitigating that. So I and and just in closing, just thank parents, you know, for all they're doing, because I know. If we are meeting with any success, and I do believe we are, it has a big part to do with what our parents are doing on a daily basis. You know, with with their children and our students. And Ms. Trixkeles, I, that that concludes my my answers for this evening, and I don't know if I missed anything, I usually do, but.
Thank you, Dr. Cascon, just if we could talk about why lunch is a problem at the elementary level.
No, great, so I I think the, I think the the idea now is is that. Our students are not, you know, they're they're only in for a half day. I think we we were discussing lunch in in the context of if we were to go to a full day. You know, that that lunch is one of the complications with that. But, you know, I think, I actually think if we were to go to a full day, and I'm really thinking more towards next year. Is, you know, I I don't see lunches as a as an insurmountable, an insurmountable obstacle. Because, you know, we could work schedules whereby we were rotating students and small cohorts to the cafeteria. Now, in terms of why we're able to do in restaurants and why we're not able to do in schools. Is, you know, and this is, this is just kind of a thought that came to mind, I'd be interested in hearing. From, you know, the authorities who are making the rules on that. But one thought I had was is that, you know, when you go to a restaurant, ostensibly, you're sitting with people with whom. You know, you know, you interact with on a regular basis, and you're distanced from people who you don't. In schools, you know, we, you know, we're we're interacting with people who are in multiple households. And as such, if we're removing masks and we're eating with people in multiple households. And I'm eating with somebody who, you know, I and I'm an asymptomatic spreader, I give it to that person and they go home. I think that's the premise, is that we're we're not containing our pods and our cohorts. Like we are in a classroom where we're masked, and I think Ms. Keen mentioned that, the idea of of putting. More students in classes, well, you know, why can, why can we feel confident about that, even though the risk in the community might be high? You know, other mitigating strategies, ventilation, masks. As soon as we go to eat, the one of the the most important mitigating strategies with the mask is off. And now we are interacting maskless eating with students coming from multiple households. And I do think that's probably one of the factors that's associated with why it's considered safe at a restaurant, but not necessarily safe at schools. But again, that's just me playing public health expert. I would really be curious to get an answer to that question from somebody who's actually trained to 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 make those decisions. Just a thought, though.
Already, and I'm not sure if you answered this question about why. There are barriers in one middle school and not all.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we initially, we, you know, we left it to principal discretion. I think that was at, they are at Edison School, I believe they have barriers. I believe that Mr. Fitzgerald is using, utilizing them selectively depending upon the classroom. You know, and we did leave that up to principal discretion and Mr. Fitzgerald purchased them, but it'll be uniform moving forward.
Okay, thank you. I just want to circle back on a few things. And then we are going to take a 10 minute break, we've been sitting. For almost five hours and we need to get the blood circulating again. There's a phrase, a rising tide lifts all boats, that is used when we talk about gifted education and we talk about enrichment and acceleration. And so as we look at our sixth grade, science and social studies and throughout elementary school, as we raise the bar. All students benefit from it, so I just would like for parents to keep that in mind. The other thing I wanted to address was Mr. Viney's question about the senior option. That's something that we had a conversation with. Mr. Moore, I think a year or two ago. About looking at a senior option for the high school, and I'm sure if we had not gone into a closure. This year, that's something that we would have talked about. Where seniors would have an opportunity for the last marking period to engage in an activity of their interest and their passion. And certainly using them at the middle school or or elementary school to work with students would be a wonderful experience. I am appreciative that we're going to be looking at other possibilities for Fridays, or at least tightening up that half hour. Four hour elementary students. And I just wanted to say to the public, this has been very difficult, we're making very difficult decisions, not excuses. As we look at all of the. Criteria for making decisions as far as opening and hybrid and the timeline. We support Dr. Cascon, he is being cautious, he is being concerned. And I think that the district is definitely moving in the right direction. And when we talk about other districts. We have to make sure we're looking at similar demographics, the size of the population. Many of the the districts that people reference for us are much smaller. The the entire population of the town. You have to look at the socioeconomics, we have a number of multifamily dwellings that many of these other towns do not have. So I just wanted to throw that out as we continue to make strides for West Orange. It's important to address our demographics and it's important to address those issues that are unique to us. And so now, Ms. Graffteza, we are going to take a, is it five, a five minute break, a five minute break, excuse me. Okay, so Ms. Graffteza, thank you, a five minute break, we'll be right back.
So thank you very much, public, for hanging in with us. We are now up to reports, discussions and recommendations. And we are looking at. Items one through four, resignations, two appointments, three leaves of absence, and four job descriptions. May I have a motion? To approve personnel?
Moved.
Thank you, Vice President Tony Cliff, is there a second?
Do we, if we want to ask to table something, is that now or do we wait until after it's motioned?
You may make a motion to table, are you making a motion to table all of personnel?
No, just one of the items.
Okay, you, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to motion to table item number four. On the job descriptions. Just in the interest of having just, you know, gone through the budget workshop and not having. Really fine tuned everything just yet, you know, there was, there were references this evening, even to some additional staffing needs that we may have in terms of therapists and social emotional learning. I just think to add two six figure.
Okay, I would need to get a second before we have a discussion.
Oh.
So we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Merklinger to table. Under personnel, item four.
Can I ask a clarifying question about the tabling? Because it's tabled or postponed, so are we, tabling is to not. That has, it's sort of indefinite, a postponement has another date.
Yes, you are correct, Ms. Tony Cliff, to table means that it does not fit in with our timeline. That there's a reason that it has to be removed from the board agenda.
Can I, then I guess I'm asking to postpone.
And we would need, we would need a. And we would need, we would need a date to postpone, postpone until which time?
When is our next budget meeting?
May 3rd.
Is that a workshop or is that?
That's the final.
That's the final?
We don't, we don't have any, I mean, we don't have any, oh, no, that's, I'm sorry.
There's another one, April 19th.
Yeah, April 19th, yeah.
Yeah. So I would just ask that we could postpone it until that time where we can, where we have further budget discussions.
All right. So now we have a motion. So we're going to withdraw, you're going to withdraw the motion to table?
Correct.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Okay. And then now we need a motion to postpone personnel item four. Is that the motion you're making?
Yes.
Until April 19th.
Until April 19th. All right. Is there a second?
I would like to be able to explain why I'm asking for this. I mean, I don't think everyone quite understands my rationale behind it.
Well, without a second, I don't believe we have a discussion.
Madam President?
Yes, Dr. Kascun.
Just, I might, I might be able to offer some, some perspective, just administratively, which might, to some extent, I think, you know, kind of provide some, so also some perspective, I, I believe where Mrs. Merklinger is coming from, but perhaps provide some reassurances for the board. You know, the, the approval of, the approval of job descriptions, you know, obliges, you know, obliges the board to, there, there are no obligations for approving job descriptions. So this, this is not, let's say, for example, that in success, you know, that the county, the county came back, presented, you know, rejected the budget, or there were some sort of unpredicted financial issue that came down the pike three or four weeks from now, and we needed to actually take another look at our proposed budget. And these two positions, which are restructured positions and did not incur any additional cost to the district, but we decided that it was, we needed to forego the creation of these positions. The board could certainly still decide to do that in the budget. What this does do is, in the event that these positions remain in the budget, it enables the administration to move more nimbly in working for the recruitment and hiring of qualified candidates as opposed to postponing that an additional three or four weeks, and thereby perhaps limiting the number of qualified candidates who could start and who could start in a timely fashion during the summer. So I just thought I'd provide that perspective, that it certainly does not pigeonhole the board into making any additional commitments in the event that these positions had to be removed from the budget successfully tonight. So I don't know if that.
Well, that doesn't really clarify, because the problem is that if we're going to go out and recruit and hire, and we eventually take these off the budget, if we were to take them out of the budget, wouldn't that essentially be hiring and firing someone on that are the same, I guess that's what I'm trying to prevent. I'm trying to prevent if, if we were to go down that road. Like, since I'm not allowed to explain why I want to postpone it for now, you know, I'm, my hands are kind of tied, because I, I think I have a very valid reason, but.
We certainly, I mean, certainly, the only thing the board could not do is appoint these individuals, these successful candidates, prior to the May 3rd final adoption of the budget. The board could advertise for the positions, the board could interview for the, well, obviously, the board wouldn't be interviewing, but the, but the administration could post for anticipated vacancies, could interview for anticipated vacancies. The only thing that the administration that I could not do, and the board could not do, would be to recommend successful candidates for hire and appoint them without the final budget being approved. But what it does do is it enables us to post, it enables us to collect resumes, it enables us to do paper screenings, enables us to do all those steps as opposed to if we wait until April 19th, then it puts us behind by three or four weeks at least before we're able to start the process. So, you know, but it does not, you know, it does not oblige the board to, to do anything beyond creating the, the job descriptions. It, it, it would lead to the administration taking some additional steps, but it would not require the board to do anything. And it certainly doesn't create a positional liability for the board in the event that these positions were removed. I will tell you that based upon, one final point, Ms. Merklinger, I apologize, that because these were in the proposed budget, I will tell you that, and because there were administrative, there was administrative restructuring that has, that will occur in order for these two positions to be created, those conversations with administrators who are impacted by the restructuring have already occurred, and those individuals have already been informed that their positions are impacted by the budget. That's not to say that we couldn't go back to them and say, actually, your position isn't, isn't impacted. But you, it is important, I think, to know that those conversations have already occurred with those administrators.
Yeah, no. And we've done that in the past where we've had conversations and then had, and then pulled it back. So that, that's not really my concern. But I, what is the cost of, I mean, I'm not sure that there's costs incurred with posting these and, and they're from in process. I, I was in HR, so I know that there's costs incurred with these. But it's disappointing that we can't have a discussion about it. So.
Well, just, just a couple more thoughts in it. Just a couple, just a couple, I'm sorry, Madam President. Just, I, I think, a couple more thoughts. The, the, the first point, I lost my train of thought with regard to the first point. So, so, so in terms of, in terms of the, the, the procedural implications, so, you know, the individuals with whom we've met have, have decisions to make relative to what they, what they would intend to do in terms of options they would pursue. Depending upon the options that they pursue, then those, whatever option they pursue then impacts potentially other employees. So, you know, the, the, the personnel process, and so, you know, it's, it's with the recommendation, recommending these positions and recommending these job descriptions, is that I would be hard pressed moving forward administratively. It's not to say that it's not the board's prerogative to vote no on any budget that I move forward as the superintendent, but based upon the, the balls and the wheels that have been set in motion already as a result of this restructure plan, I would be hard pressed to, to, to change this particular aspect of the budget. I might look for other places to save the money, but there would be a lot that needed to be walked back, namely, a complete restructuring of the Central Office Administration, which has already moved forward. So, you know, that, and as far as the cost goes, you know, our intention is to post, you know, for a large ad coming up for all of our anticipated openings, based upon retirements, based upon some of our new positions, and, and based upon anticipated for these. So, other than the fact that the ad might be slightly larger because we'd have two additional positions in it, you know, that cost is budgeted and it would be incurred for posting all of our anticipated vacancies. So that, that's all I'll say. I, Madam President, I appreciate you allowing that. And I'll close my remarks at that point.
Thank you. And somehow we have a motion inside a motion. So I, we originally started with a motion to approve that was from Ms. Tony Cliff. And then we had a question from Ms. Merklinger.
I mean, the email, can I just ask a question though?
Well, let me finish. Please, please. Then we had a question from Ms. Merklinger about tabling an item, and that was rescinded. And then we moved to a motion to postpone to April 19th. And that was her motion, and there was no second. We've now had discussion. So what I would suggest at this point, Ms. Merklinger, since you want to have a discussion, is that we go back and second the motion that was originally put forth by Ms. Tony Cliff, and then we can open this up to discussion and you can share.
Except that it wouldn't be for the motion that I was asking for.
Well, there was no second.
Right. But which, which I'm trying to understand, because the email that you sent me said that we've motioned and then have a discussion about it. So I guess I'm just a little confused.
Well, I'm going to back up.
Okay.
Ask for a second for the original motion from Ms. Tony Cliff. Is there a second? On the motion to approve personnel items one through four?
Second?
Okay, Ms. Werter. Discussion, Ms. Merklinger.
It's irrelevant at this point, because my motion is, it's to table or to postpone. So this is a discussion about approving it. So this, my point would be irrelevant at this juncture.
But here is your opportunity, and if other members of the board agree with you, then we wouldn't vote to move this forward this evening.
Right. But that's, I guess that's my concern. I'm not saying I don't want to move it forward at all. What I'm saying, asking is to postpone it. I don't want it to be taken off the table completely. And that is my, that's my one concern. And that was what I was trying to get through to everyone, was that I don't want it dismissed completely. I'm not writing it off. I think just we need to have further discussions as a whole board in relationship to the budget.
And, and also keep in mind that these are just job descriptions. We did approve the preliminary budget at our last budget meeting.
Correct.
So these are just job.
And I, but I've said that from the very start, that I was not comfortable with these two positions being added. And I, so I guess as part of the discussion, my concern is from a budget perspective, given the financial landscape of our district, these two positions are six-figure administrative positions that, in the one instance, the job is, the, the criteria for the role is already being done by two members of our administration. And I think, you know, to, to the point that was made during the budget discussion is, you know, we're trying to not eliminate jobs that will change the landscape of our school district. By adding this, by not having this position, or not having both of these, we're not changing the landscape at all. From a financial perspective, I didn't see a cost savings with both of them, maybe in one case, but not the other. So what I'm just asking is that we just take a step back, especially with what we just heard this evening, the need for therapists, the needs for emotional, social, emotional learning. We're not sure how much money we're actually going to get, what those funds can actually be used for. There's so many what-ifs and so many things that need to be determined still, that yes, I understand the timing. I was in HR. I understand from, from a hiring perspective, what goes into recruiting, interview process, I completely understand that. But I don't think it's going to harm us to wait to have further discussions about this, especially given the financial landscape, especially with the fact that in three years, we are now increasing taxes on our communities over $600. And that might not seem like, you know, I see, you know, everyone goes back to it's, oh, it's only $15 a month. That, that's like basically calling our community stupid, because it's not just $15 a month. For some folks, that is a little bit more of a financial hardship. And I think to discount, you know, and not do our due diligence and to take the budget, you know, wholeheartedly and still put our pencils to paper, which we said we were going to do, you know, so that's just where my concern is with adding two administrative six-figure positions when we're cutting, you know, 31 jobs or, or was it 20 jobs. And, and so I just have a hard time with adding two positions right now. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it in the future or that they're not needed positions, but right in this current state, I don't know that it's really a financial, a fiscal responsible decision to make. Hence my asking to postpone it until we have further budget discussions. And if we have room in the budget to add them, you know, maybe that's something we do. But right now in the current state, I don't think it looks or has the optics that's fair to our community to add two six-figure jobs, you know, and increase taxes in, given the financial landscape right now, especially with COVID and with there being so many unknowns. We don't know what funding we're getting. We don't know what the funding can necessarily exactly be used for. We, one day we're buying barriers, another day we're not buying barriers. We don't know. So I don't know that we can really say what our expenses are necessarily going to be. Yes, we have a good idea, but from a staffing perspective, who's to say that we're not going to need more teachers on staff? And, you know, like I said, that the therapist was brought up, social, emotional learning, things like that, especially with the loss of learning that we're hearing about and the studies that are being, you know, brought to, brought to our attention on almost a daily basis. So I just think we need to put a little bit more thought into this before just jumping ahead with it.
I just have a question. Are we having a discussion then? Am I, oh, so this, so are we?
Ms. Werter?
Okay. So I think these positions, they do align with our district goals, our previous past five-year district strategic plan. And I think from going forward, based off of our board goals, I do think that these still align with those goals. And I think that Dr. Kascun provided, myself anyway, with some ease, I guess, in approving just the, the job descriptions, because as Dr. Kascun has mentioned, if it is our prerogative to, as a board, eventually to withdraw these positions, you're not obliged to provide or hire for these positions. So I just feel comfortable with passing just the job description at this point in time.
Thank you, Ms. Werter. Anyone else who would like to discuss this item? All right. Then we're, Dr. Kascun, you look puzzled.
Well, I, I know it's, it's, it's not necessarily typical for superintendent to participate in the discussion. But, but I, I think that, you know, that Ms. Merklinger raised some points, which, you know, respectfully, I feel as if merits some response for me as the superintendent, because I think, you know, at the end of the day, the recommendation of these positions, the, the forwarding of the budget, which, you know, which, that, that came to the board, was done so under my recommendation. And so I, I wouldn't want the community to be, you know, for those still on and those who might watch this, this, this board meeting, to be left with the impression that, you know, kind of some of the considerations with Ms. Merklinger has raised were not at top of mind, and that there, these positions were not recommended, both with a, a fiscal lens, but also an eye on, on organizational efficiency and administrative efficiency, which they were. And I think it's important to recognize that, you know, that there was a net, there was a net loss of one administrative position in terms of our restructuring. I, I think the other thing is that, and, and maybe I, maybe I misunderstood this, but my understanding was, is that we had, you know, we had, yes, we had consensus on a proposed budget that's going to the county for approval. The, you know, typically, typically, and Ms. Flowers can correct me if I'm wrong here, there aren't typically a lot of changes that happen to a budget between when it's sent to the county for approval. Now, that's not to say that changes can't be made, but my understanding was, is like, all things remaining equal, this was going to be the budget. Now, if, whether there was some sort of an unforeseen implication on either the revenue side or the expense side, that could potentially impact on what we did. But barring any changes, my understanding that this was the budget and we had, we had agreement on the, on the, on the basic pieces of this. As far as, you know, what's come up in the community about, you know, therapists and things of that nature, I mean, I've spoken on a number of occasions, because questions have come up in terms of, you know, what are you, as the superintendent, the district, doing to address mental health? And I've spoken to that. I've spoken to how we're utilizing the SRT2 grant for that, spoken to how I'm working with the director of school counseling to develop a strategic, strategic plan for addressing social, emotional, and mental health next year. I've spoken to that. The reality of it is, is that we're never going to have the funds to equip our district with really the number of counselors and therapists that we would really need to get a caseload to be where it would be reasonable. And as far as, you know, the money goes from the American Rescue Act, I would argue that that's probably the source of income, revenue that we'll be able to use to, to fund that. Again, we have no idea exactly what we'll be able to use that for, but I'm optimistic that we'll be able to use it for staff to supplement our mental health resources, as well as Israel's or perhaps our virtual, teachers to staff a virtual academy. But I, I just want the, you know, the board and the community to know that I, that I forwarded this plan to the board, including the administrative restructuring, not without, you know, a significant amount of thought. And I would just, there was one question, final point, Ms. Trixkeles, that came up in the public session, we're not cutting 20 teachers. We're not cutting 20 teachers. Not even close, not even close to 20 teachers. We, we may be cutting 20 staff members total, but I think, I think it's three, I think seven, seven, seven classroom staff. The rest are either administrators, non-certificated staff. So we've been managed to balance a budget that not only addresses some significant deficiencies in our physical plants and our technology, restructure administration to quite frankly, make it a more effectively and efficiently operating central office administration with, which much, with much more capacity without spending any additional money. And at the same time, really minimizing impact on the classroom programs. I think it's, you know, a, a really well-done budget. And I think we talked about the idea about that 1.5. Sure, could we cut it further? More staff? We could, but then we would obviously would be undermining our, our revenue moving forward. So I, I just thought it was important to just speak to that because the, the manner in which I make decisions and the thought process, I think it's really important, particularly in light of, you know, some concerns that were raised about folks thinking that I haven't been transparent in my leadership. I certainly won't want people to walk away with that impression. So I appreciate allowing me that, Mr. Trixell.
Yeah, no, and, and Dr. Kascone, I don't want you to think that I'm questioning.
Merklinger?
Yeah.
No, I was recognizing you.
Oh, um, thank you. So I, I fully understand where you're coming from. I think just, it must have been, I guess maybe it was misunderstood, but I was never 100% fully supportive of adding these positions. And I made that very clear that I was not. So, you know, I, I do, but I was under the impression that the budget was a working document and I actually asked that question and was told yes. So I was under the impression, given from our workshop, that we were still going to go back and make additional edits to it before finalizing it. So if I misunderstood that, then I apologize. But then I wouldn't have voted yes for it last week because I was not 100% on, on what this is. So, if I was given wrong information last week, then, you know, I apologize, but that's what I was told that we, this was a working, the budget was a working document. I was very clear that I was not in support of just adding these two positions until we had more definitive information from a financial perspective. But, you know, I, you know, so I, I understand where you're coming from, but like I said, I just don't think, you know, it has good optics right now, given the financial landscape. And that's just where I land on it.
Yeah, well, I certainly think with a, you know, with a, you know, with, with a.
Your voice.
Dr. Kascone, your, your mic cut out again.
No, you're okay now.
Nope, he's done. Okay.
And, you know, I would just add that, you know, some of the criteria that's being added for these positions are already being done. And I would just say, why are we not holding those folks that are doing it? Not that we're not holding them accountable, but I would just think that we would just hold them more accountable for get ensuring that the, the items are, are being done. And that's all I'll say about it for this evening. But if, if no one else has discussions, then I guess, I guess we vote on it or on these.
I'm waiting to see what Dr. Kascone is.
No, unfortunately, you're.
Why now?
There you go.
Okay, great.
I, I have nothing further than Mr. Trixell.
Okay, so once again, any other board members choose, who are choosing to make a comment? None being heard. Mrs. Flowers, would you please do the honors?
Mrs. Werter?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes, except item fours, no.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tunnycliff?
Yes.
President Trixell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to curriculum B, items one through four, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Was that Mr. Rothstein or Ms. Werter? Not sure.
I'll defer.
Okay, Ms. Werter, thank you. Any discussion? Mrs. Flowers, please.
Mrs. Werter?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tunnycliff?
Yes.
President Trixell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finance, items A and B, special services and the business office, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Seconded.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rothstein. Any discussion? There being, oh, okay. Okay, Mr. Rothstein first, please.
Thank you. I did have a question about business office B, item three. I was just wondering if we could get a little bit of a, of a description for the record.
This is item three.
Recommend approval of the amendment to the expanding pre-apprenticeship.
Culinary program.
Right. So the, 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 the present circumstances under which we're operating have curtailed some of the originally planned activities whereby our culinary students would be engaging in kind of onsite practical experiences. So it's required them to kind of revise the grant to reallocate those funds to other activities and resources for the students. This was just for clarification. This was the $100,000 grant that the state successfully applied for last year from the New Jersey Department of Education.
So grant funds that we had already been awarded, but we were unable to use in the way originally intended. So this is a, a different direction of spending it.
Right, an amendment.
Appreciated. Thank you.
There was another question. Was that, who was that? I'm sorry.
I had a question on item number seven, the transportation agreement with Hunterdon County Educational Services. So this was in our budget, correct? And this includes the, this includes taking out the courtesy or busing for grade six to 12. So parents that live or families that live within two miles of the school would now have to drive their students to schools. Is that how I understand it?
Two point five miles for high school students.
Two point five miles. Okay.
And Ms. Flowers.
And that's all included in this.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Kascone, did you have?
I was just gonna ask maybe Ms. Flowers to, because there's arguably a similar concept at play here as the job descriptions. So I would just want to ask Ms. Flowers maybe to share some perspective on why Hunterdon sort of needs to have some commitment sooner rather than later on this contract for their planning and preparation.
All right, Dr. Kascone. So this is a resolution for Hunterdon to be able to move forward with the restructuring of their fleet. And by look, by being able to eliminate these routes, it will cause Hunterdon to have to take a look at their lease, their leases and decide which buses they're going to sell and which drivers they're going to lay off. Because if we don't have these routes in play, they won't need the additional inventory of buses and staff.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers.
You're welcome, Dr. Kascone.
All right, and I would like to recognize the Blackboard Giving Fund. New York Life and its donors, $80. These are employees who had matching grants. So thank you very much. Any further discussion? Ms. Werter?
Yes, I just had a, just can you give a little clarity on the scale data checks, what they were for? One of them is larger amount, but. I'm sorry, Ms. Werter, you cut out for a minute. I didn't hear. I'm just a little, yeah, just to clarify, clarify of the, of the background on the scale data. So the scale data checks, they're coded. If they weren't cashed, and once we go back and do our reconciliations and the scale data items, we will end up reissuing once we contact the people to find out if it's need for reissuing or if it was voided because it just simply is to the point where we can't even contact the person. But in this case, these were, one was for home instruction, professional services for special ed, and Aiden Low.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Flowers. We're ready for a vote.
Mrs. Werter?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tunnycliff?
Yes.
President Trixell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. And this brings us to petitions and hearings of citizens on any topic, whether on the agenda or any other item of interest. Thank you, Ms. Gravteza. Oh, my goodness, it's another day. Tuesday morning.
It is. So yes, as President said, this is the time where it is petitions of hearings and citizens. And my screen is not moving. Oh my gosh, there we go. And if you would like to speak, you just use the raise your hand button located at the bottom of the screen. And we have just the name Paula. If you can push the button that's now up on your screen and give us your name and address for the record. Paula, if you're there, there's a prompt on your screen. You can push it. Okay, I'm gonna call, oh, there you are. Hi. Hi, can you hear us? Nope, okay, they muted themselves and lowered their hand. So at this time, this is the last call. If there is anyone who would like to speak, using the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. And there are no other takers.
Thank you, Ms. Gravteza. So we are ready for reports from the board. Ms. Werter?
Sorry, I actually had, um, thank you for everyone that stuck around. Um, I did want to mention the Anderson Middle School Student Council is doing a food drive. And all the food donated will go to the Holy Trinity Church. This food drive is open now, up until April 22nd, and you can just drop food off at the front of the school building. And, you know, they will donate, the food will be donated to the Trinity Church. I also did want to highlight and just Mountaineer Sports Flash, I'll just go off the titles that they, they, they had an addition, number 62, ladies, mountaineers ranked in state, mountaineer bowlers strike gold again, the hockey team battles cap straw, the complete student athlete, and great job Kylie, Mountaineer Nation is proud. So that was just a quick mini update from the Mountaineers Athletics. And I did want to thank our community and the advocacy and the consistent fight for our students from all of our parents. I do have, I know last week I, I did a poem and, um, I just wanted to end tonight with one as well. The poem is titled Kindness, and it's by Naomi Sahab Nai in 1952. It says, "Before you know what kindness really is, you must lose things. Feel the future dissolve in a moment like salt in a weakened broth. What you held in your hand, what you counted and carefully saved. All this miss go, so you know how desolate the landscape can be between the regions of kindness. How you ride and ride, thinking the bus will never stop. The passengers eating maize and chicken will stare out the window forever." And so I just, that's the end of it. I just say that to say that it is easy to be kind to each other when things are easy. It's not so difficult to have a positive mental attitude when there is no adversity being experienced. And I think the true test of kindness comes when times are difficult. And that's all. Thank you, everybody, and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Werter. Ms. Merklinger?
So just a couple updates. The class of 2021 scholarships by the West Orange Scholarship Fund, the deadline is April 5th. So that is quickly approaching. International SEL Day is this week. It's on March 26th. This Thursday is the Virtual Broadway Night by the West Orange High School Choir. That's at 8:00 PM. That is online on Thursday. The West Orange Arts Council premiered our high school AP art exhibit. You can mention, you can visit that virtually on our, at www.woarts.org. Marching band demonstration. There is an open house this Wednesday, the 24th, at 7:30 PM on Zoom. And with Ms. Tunnycliff, I am part of the sustainability program with West Orange High School in partnership with the Green Team. They were awarded a $10,000 grant, Sustainable Jersey for Schools. And so what that involves is there are three projects that they're going to be focused on for this year to get the bronze, the bronze level award. There are a lot of activities and items that the team is working on, on one of those being policy. You have to have a sustainability policy, so we are looking to that in part of our policy updates. There is another meeting this week. In the interest of time, there was a video that we were, I want to show that just highlighted the, the three projects that they submitted as part of their submission to receive this grant. And it's pretty neat. I don't know if Lauren, if we can get it on our Word of Ed webpage for folks that want to check it out, but it's pretty, pretty interesting to see all the work that our students are putting in to help make West Orange High School a bronze leader in sustainable New Jersey. So thank you, everyone, for that.
To the meeting at this point for the YouTube, I can cut it in here.
Oh.
I can play it. So if people want to see it, they can watch it also during the meeting.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Cool.
The West Orange Green Team is proud to announce the West Orange Innovations in Sustainability Grant-funded Projects from Sustainable Jersey for Schools, which includes three projects that promote solutions to environmental problems. The Artificial Floating Island Project will engage students in hands-on learning where they will be testing a local water source to determine the severity of pollution. Students will then design and fabricate the islands to float the plants. The water would be tested again to determine the effectiveness of the floating island's bioremediation. Students, staff, and community members already receive training on the benefits of floating islands, how they work, and how to build them. We will be floating these islands in a pond right next to our school. Our Futuristic Farming Project addresses one of the largest environmental issues we face today, which is industrial agriculture. The environmental science students have learned about vertical farming and how to grow food indoors in controlled climates. With the funding provided by Sustainable Jersey for Schools, students will design, build, and maintain a scalable indoor farming operation whose goal is not only to educate students on industrial agriculture, but also to provide nourishing vegetables to the school's food classes as well as underserved communities. The solar bus shelter idea began when two student athletes enrolled in our Engineering and Design Solutions course identified the problem that there is no shelter or place to charge their phones outside the school at night. They designed and constructed a solar bus shelter prototype that was recognized by New Jersey Assemblyman John McKeon for their work and received a ceremonial resolution from the New Jersey State Senate and General Assembly to honor their work. With a tremendous amount of community collaboration and support, the school was able to acquire an old New Jersey Transit Bus Shelter to approve upon the original prototype. Students began to disassemble and clean. Students began to disassemble and clean the shelter, removing all the broken panels which allowed them to repaint it. Vector graphics were created for the shelter, which included the school mascot, our school logo, and a map of West Orange. Panel engraving has begun and will be completed next school year. With the funding from Sustainable Jersey, we will finally be able to purchase the essential parts for the shelter, such as the charging station, solar lighting, roofing materials and additional replacement panels. The West Orange Innovations in Sustainability will educate students and our local community on the importance of environmental sustainability and the impact it has on the future of not only New Jersey, but our entire planet.
And that was it.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger. And let's see, we are up to Vice President Tunnycliff.
Thank you. Don't have too much to report. I think the big news was the CDC guideline change. And I think that's really it for me tonight. I don't have too much else, so thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein.
Always in competition with Mrs. Tunnycliff, I will underdo her by having nothing to say at all.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. I just want to thank Governor Murphy and County Executive Joe DiVincenzo and Mayor Parisi in particular for making it possible to have our teachers and staff vaccinated in an expeditious manner. This will certainly provide a level of safety, security and comfort for those members of our educational community choosing this option. And I just wanted to also make a reminder or give a reminder to our West Orange community regarding communication with the board. The board has three formal ways for the community to communicate with us. One is attendance at board meetings such as this. You have two public comment periods of time to address us. The other one would be the email, and it's our first initial and our last name at westorangeschools.org. And we do on occasion get snail mail at 179 Eagle Rock Avenue. We do not make a habit of responding to informal modes of communication such as social media, which would include Facebook posts. And we encourage parents to talk to teachers first. If you're at the middle school, high school or elementary, if you need to speak with guidance counselors, and then principals for solutions at the local level. So we encourage parents to do that. And then I also just wanted to share that the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, or we refer to it as NJ S L A, which is administered in English Language Arts, Math Science, Dynamic Learning Maps, D L M, and Access for our E L Ls are all planned to begin on April 5th. And you heard Mr. Mendez mention that. And this is all done despite a waiver request that went in from our New Jersey Department of Education to the U.S. Department of Education. Our board has penned a letter to President Biden and Secretary of Education Cardona with copies to Governor Murphy and Commissioner McMillan to request that the waiver be honored to either cancel or postpone the state testing this year. We are quite concerned about our students' mental state, the stress that this would add to both our students and our staff. We're concerned about equity issues with instruction, homework supervision and the whole testing environment. We believe that our teachers can adequately assess our students for the remainder of this school year. As a board, we are responsible for advocating for our school district at the local, state and national level. And we will be checking with New Jersey School Boards Association on their position. And I think that wraps things up for us this evening. And so our next virtual Board of Education meeting is a policy workshop this Thursday, March 25th at 7:00 PM. And at this point, I am adjourning the meeting. And thank you, everyone who hung in there with us. And thank you, as usual, to our board members and Dr. Kascón and Ms. Flowers and Mr. Mendez. Have a good evening and morning.
Thank you. And this is to inform everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Graffteza.
Thank you. When I end the meeting, it'll end for both those on and off screen and other business will be conducted. Thank you, everyone. Have a great morning.
It's another day. We don't need a motion. If it had been yesterday, I would have asked for a motion.
It's okay to end the meeting. I just, I just want to make sure.
Yes.
All right. Bye, everybody.
Good night.